Good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here with us today. We'll call our meeting order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple things to consider today. The first is the MOU for the industrial siting application for the Chigwater Energy Project.
And this is specifically for impact assistance funding? And so this has been a effort of Rex Johnson, Candy Wright, who've done excellent work for what it's worth. And you can see all these entities that are party to it. Again, industrial siting allows for a certain amount of money in the event the project moves forward. It's to mitigate any impact during the construction period. So each entity will have to sign, of course. Exhibit A is still in process. As we work through everybody's requests and what can be defended. But in essence, it's just an agreement that we're all going into it together. Rex is representing all of those entities. There may be times that entities need to justify a cost themselves. If we can't quite get it there, they still want to ask for it. But in essence, the MOU says we're not fighting anybody's request.
And each entity will testify as to their request in front of industrial siting camps?
Yeah, so every entity has to prepare prefiled testimony. I finished mine on Thursday, ten pages. So every entity will have to do that as well.
And then we'll consider a cost share agreement later on?
Yes.
Do you guys have any questions about the MOU?
No, I don't. I would move to accept the MOU and approve that chairman to sign.
Second, Kate's been moved to accept the MOU and authorize the chairman to sign. Is there any further discussion? Very none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think if there's any, I see one entity for sure. But really appreciate all the entities, a lot of responsiveness, short timeframes to do this in. This has to be returned today, so Rex could get it filed. I just appreciate everybody's work coming. You would have been having a special meeting no matter what. Oh, by the way, we're talking about sheriff today.
Okay, the second thing on our agenda is to appoint a sheriff to fill the unexpired term of Sheriff Russell. So I think we'll start by, we will interview each of the candidates individually. We'll ask the other two candidates to step out of the room while we interview, do each interview. And I think we'll start by drawing numbers to see who gets to go first. So some names in the hat, and if you fellows will come up. Just pick a number out of there. All right, who's the lefty?
Number three.
Jake.
Steve, just a minute. Grab a coffee from underneath there, so we can get set.
Okay, we have some questions we'd like to ask, but I think we'll start off by, go ahead and introduce yourself and tell why you're interested in being the sheriff of Platte County.
My name's Curtis Hockrock. I moved back to Wheatland after about twenty-five, thirty years being gone from here about five years ago. And I spent right at twenty years in law enforcement with the City of Sydney Police Department in Western Nebraska. And, you know, when I moved back here, I came back with the intent to give back to the community that helped raise me. I couldn't think of a better way to do that than to step up and at least make the effort towards the sheriff position. In different conversations with business owners, having a business downtown itself, in different conversations and hearing that they just felt like they didn't have a relationship with the sheriff's office and some different things like that. You can either continue to complain about the problem or you can step up and try and be a solution to that problem. That's why I'm here and why I'm here.
What do you think is the most important purpose of the sheriff or the sheriff's department?
I think that the number one thing that we have to do is, you know, to protect the citizens of this county. That's the number one thing that they do. Whether that's by making traffic stops with people that are speeding because, you know, that's a dangerous act. Whether that's just simply investigating the criminal activity that gets reported. Whether it's just simply being at some of the community events to make sure things go the way that they should go and the peace is maintained. Beyond that, you know, the sheriff is also responsible for operating the jail and needs to make sure that the jail is run properly and that all of the my own jail standards are met.
Curtis, thanks for stepping up, you know. I just got, I guess my first question would be, what one thing would qualify you over the other two to become the sheriff? Which is the top law officer in the county that has to stand heads and shoulders above? What one thing?
I would just say it's my ability to work with a variety of groups of people. One of the things that has happened over the last few years since I've been here is I have been the county at large representative on the lodging tax board. And we did have, you know, some tempers flared over the last year and different things happen. And we had to come together. We had to settle that down. We had to go through negotiations with, you know, the chamber board. So my ability to keep a cool head, and it seems like everybody around you is losing theirs, that's probably what would make me stand above them.
What's your relationship with the sheriff's office right now? As far as the deputies and dispatch and everything else that goes along with that? Do you have a relationship with them?
I don't necessarily. Captain Curlin helped me this last summer coach a youth baseball team that his son was on. I got to know him through that. But as far as any actual direct contact with any of the deputies or anything like that, I really haven't had any. I have, you know, I attend a lot of our local community events. I'm at fair, our daughter's show animals at fair. And I see them around. But as far as having an actual relationship with any one of them, I would say that I really don't yet.
Are there anything that you would change about how the sheriff's office or the detention center or the dispatches managed currently?
I think that, you know, one of the things that I see is that, again, I think we've lost kind of that relationship between the community. And what I hear and what I see when I'm around town and talking with people is the community doesn't have a whole lot of respect for it. Not exactly certain why that is. But once I was in the office, you know, digging into that a little bit, talking with the deputies, saying, hey, what's going on out there? That is making this happen. I think that that piece of respect goes both directions. As a law enforcement officer, you can't expect that respect from the citizens that you serve unless you give it as well. And, you know, there's different things that, you know, that can be done. I think there's, a lot of times we tend to get tunnel vision when we, when things are presented, when problems maybe are presented, and we see one way to fix it, and it's relatively expensive. I think there are times when we really need to sit down, think outside the box and say, okay, how can we fix this issue at the lowest cost possible and the most effective way possible? I, it's, I think that once you get into the office, not having been in there myself, not having much contact with them, I'm not sure where the problem is. But I think that through some conversation, through just some simple observation, it may be pretty simple to fix.
So what specific things do you do to build rapport with the community?
I think just being seen, that's the biggest thing. You gotta be out there, you gotta be seen. One of the things that I've done in the past with people, officers that I've supervised, that I told them, we're gonna go to these community events, and you're going to be there, and you need to be, you know, you need to be present, you need to have conversations with people. If we show up and I see three of you in a circle, and the three of you are talking together, that's not necessarily a good thing. And people, you know, civilians tend to take that as a us versus them mentality. That's a closed circle, we're not invited into that conversation. And so opening up that circle and, you know, just being out there and visiting with people and seeing, you know, seeing what their concerns are. Because people will tell you things as you're walking by that they're not going to call a report.
I got kind of a two-part question. Part of it's business and part of it's law. Basically, how comfortable are you with the budgetary process? Because you're gonna have your finger on it for a longer period of time for this current budget year than the last sheriff did. You're looking at nine months, that you've got your finger on three separate budgets. And what level of importance do you put on that under your control? And because you've been out of law enforcement, would you have to go back and get post-certified?
I'll adjust the first part, and then I'll go back to the post-certification. I did, I sat down with Malcolm here actually earlier this week, and I asked him for budget versus actions. It looks like to me that we're still within the budget. And I think that it's highly important that we try and maintain that. We try to stay in there as much as we possibly can. There are going to be things that are out of our control. You know, if there's a call that takes forever to resolve, there's going to be some overtime issues that we're gonna have to deal with. There is money built into the budget for that. However, I've seen law enforcement budgets where they exceed the overtime budget. So those are things that are extremely important to me. The taxpayers in this county deserve the absolute best we can do to be good stewards of the money that we have. And to get the most bang for our buck is very important to me. I, you know, one of the stories that I will share with you is when I was in with the Sydney Police Department, we were looking at the DARE program and all of those things. At that time, there wasn't a whole lot of training available for myself. The only training that was available was Anchorage, Alaska in June. I was all about it, my chief, not so much. So what we did is we sat down, again, we thought outside the box. How can we do this? How can we continue a program? And we actually sat down with two of the guidance counselors, and we wrote our own, we wrote our own curriculum. We built our own program that was, you know, specific, and it was fluid. And we went from about twenty-five to three thousand dollars a year to about two hundred and fifty. So cost-saving measures like that, I think, are extremely important. And if you can do those things, if you have the expertise, if you have the ability to do it, if you have somebody that's willing to do the research that it takes to get those things done. I also wrote a lot of grants. So I'm familiar with the grant writing process. I'm familiar with digging for those grants and finding the right ones. As far as the post-certification, I've left a message with the Training Center in Douglas. I have talked to some of the folks that I do know that are in law enforcement. One of the gentlemen that I supervised for years is now the chief of police in Pine Bluff, so I reached out to him. And he said that based on where we're at, he believes that we may be able to not necessarily do a full academy to get post-certified, to test in, to do like a half-academy type of situation. I'm not sure how that looks. Again, I haven't gotten an exact word from the Training Center. But as soon as I, you know, as soon as I would have that, we will have to sit down and figure that out.
How do you handle mistakes that you have made? Also mistakes that maybe people you supervise made?
You got them. You can't push them on. You know, I think it goes a long ways when a mistake is made if somebody, you know, the person that made that mistake is willing to step up and say, yep, I did that. I'm going to correct that action so it doesn't happen again. As far as people I'm supervising, you know, I think sitting down, having that conversation with them, what happened, what was, you know, what all was going on? And how did we get to that point? And have them basically walk through that with you so they start to learn the process of, okay, that's what I did. You know, how can I be better the next time? Okay, mistakes are going to happen. We're not perfect humans. That's, perfection is unattainable. You know, even when I was coaching football, I never, never, never did I tell my kids, we're going to be perfect, because that's unattainable. We can strive for that, but we'll never get there. So I think owning, number one, owning it and fixing the problem and fixing the behavior that caused that mistake to happen are the two biggest things.
So I'm gonna go down that line a little bit. Asked about rapport with the community, how do you become part of the crew in the sheriff's office as an outsider? How do you walk in as a sheriff with very established deputies and whatnot and become part of that? How do you become a leader for an outsider? What's your process?
Actions are gonna speak louder than words. You know, I've been around a lot of law enforcement officers in my life. And they don't want to hear you talk. They want to see it. They want to see that you're willing to lead. And, you know, as far as a leader, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a boss. I'm not gonna tell you to go. I'm a leader, I'm gonna say, let's go. And as a leader, I think that it becomes our job to also train and work through all of those guys that may be the person that replaces me in the future. And so I think the actions that you take in sitting down and instead of saying, this is the way it has to be, sit down and say, explain to me why you do it this way. And maybe offer some different alternatives and say, well, have you thought about this? Can we do this? You don't have to come in and be an angry dictator right off the bat. You can, you know, sitting down, I think, you know, especially with your command staff, and saying, okay, why are we doing it this way? Explain that to them. Instead of coming off as, saying something like, that's just ridiculous. Why are we doing it that way? We're gonna change that right now. I think that if you're going to change things, change has to happen a little bit over time. You can't, you can't come in and turn the place upside down. And the law enforcement that I've been around in the past, they respect that when they see the actions versus just words.
One of the things that we have a challenge within Platte County is retaining people because all the other counties and entities around us are a little bit more fortunate and can pay better wages and stuff. What would be your plan to retain employees and recruit employees?
One of the first things I would look at is what kind of schedule are we working? Are we working an eight-hour schedule where they're in five days a week? Are we working a ten-hour schedule where they're in four days a week? If we can offer them a twelve-hour schedule where they're four on, four off, that tends to help keep the morale up. It helps the mental health of your officers because they're, you know, eight hours a day and you're coming in every, you know, for five straight days, it tends to wear on them. But if you can give them four days off, if you can guarantee them, I've worked with schedules that are twelve-hour schedules where you guarantee them every other weekend off. Those types of things tend to go a long way with officers. You know, the other thing that goes, you know, and I hear this, and we've talked about it, and I've had multiple conversations with people. Signing bonuses, I'm not sure are, I mean, yeah, it's nice, it's attractive. But signing bonuses without some sort of condition with them are simply an invitation, come, get the signing bonus, move on to the next agency. And I've seen officers that have done that, too. We instituted signing bonuses. We put with it, they had to be there full twelve months before the signing bonus was paid out. So those are, those are just different things you can do. Retention-wise, we could, you know, again, the budget is what it is. And as far as saying, hey, I gotta have more money, where's that gonna come from, number one? So you have to make it, you have to make it a quality working environment that people want to come to. And when the officers that you do have, when the deputies that you do have go out to training and they talk about either how terrible life is at Platte County or they're gonna talk about how great life is at Platte County. And that goes a long ways. And if you can, if you can show them that you appreciate them and, you know, give them the, those extended days off, four on, four off is huge for law enforcement guys. So again, like I said, you've gotta look at the other tangible pieces that you can change. Because the budget is what it is, the money is what it is. And competing monetarily with places, you know, like Campbell County, Congress County, we're not gonna be able to do that. So we've gotta compete in other ways.
I guess, Curtis, I got one question concerning, maybe it could be considered a management style, maybe it's not a style. But I guess in terms of listening, because God gave us two ears and one mouth. So how would you make sure that all the deputies, dispatch, and people from detention and all of it, how would you make sure they feel respected and heard when they have a concern? How would you do that?
Well, you have to, you have to not only, you have to listen. You can't just hear them. You have to listen. And there's two very different pieces there. I can hear what they're saying, but if I'm not listening intently, then they're gonna know that. Okay, when they're talking to you about a concern, look them in the eye. Show them that, you know, hey, this is what we're gonna do to try and fix this. Follow up with them. Did we get it fixed? Is this a problem still? I think that those are huge pieces of being that leader. Not only hearing those complaints or those issues, but taking that by the horn, doing what you can to fix the issue, if it's within your power to fix it. And then follow up with them. How are things going? Is it better now than it was? And give them that permission to have an open dialogue with you.
What's your first ninety days look like? Where do you expect to spend each portion of your day? Doing what, I imagine you've been talking about, you obviously focus on know what the budget is, know what that is. But how do you see your first ninety days working out?
First ninety days, you're gonna learn a lot about, again, especially from my standpoint, not having a whole lot of relationship with anyone inside that agency. Is sitting down, first off, with the entire team. I think that's important. I think that that needs to happen day one. You sit down with everybody and say, this is who I am, you know, and this is where I come from. I think beyond that, then you need to sit down one-on-one with every person that works there. Whether it's the road deputies, the office staff, the detention staff, the dispatch staff. You're gonna have to sit down and have that one-on-one conversation with each of them. Then, you know, we've got, I mean, at Parks and Rec, I have a copy of our budget. And it is literally put right there on my bulletin board so I can see it. Each month, I change it out as we get the budget versus actuals so I know where we're at. I think that having that available is important, too. If someone has concerns or questions, if we have training requests, those training requests have to be taken also one-on-one. We had a guy, at one point, he came and he asked to go to a training. And the training was gonna be about three thousand dollars. And it was going to be in Las Vegas. At that point, we have to really ask ourselves, how important is this training to our agency? How often are we gonna use it? Sometimes training requests, the answer's gonna have to be no because the budget's not there. If it's something that our agency can use and we can justify that training, I'll do everything I can to get our guys trained. But, yeah, that first ninety days is going to be extremely vital in getting to know the deputies, getting to know, you know, the office staff, how they have been working, you know. If there's something that needs to change there as far as how the communication flows from myself as the sheriff to them as the deputies, then we need to change it to make sure that they're getting exactly what it is that I'm wanting to say.
I've got a real simple one for you, it's yes or no. If appointed, would you run for this office in the next?
If appointed, would you run for this office in the next election cycle?
That's a conversation that has been had a lot, um, and, and the answer is, I would like to, yes. But, you know, again, if I'm, if I'm not the right fit for this county, and you guys appoint me and I'm not the right fit for this county, then we've gotta find somebody who is the right fit and put that person in that office.
Well, Sydney will make that decision.
Right, yep.
What, what are your views on the specialized programs of the Sheriff's Department, like the K-9 unit and the SRO program?
I'll start, I'll start with the SRO program because I, I do have a little bit of passion there. Um, I, I spent several years as the SRO, uh, in Sydney. I was, I was one of the first in Western Nebraska. Um, we built, we built an SRO program there that, that became the model for Nebraska. People were reaching out to us. How'd you do what you did? I see on, on the budget that I got from, from Malcolm, that part of the, the wages for our SROs is paid through a cop screen. And that's a great way to start. We've gotta sustain that though. Those cops grants are gonna go for the SROs. And, and one of, one of the first things I would suggest is that we sit down with the superintendent, we sit down with the school board, and we come up with a contract where these officers are spending the majority of their time in your building, taking care of your issues. Can we work something out where you're gonna pay a portion of this officer's wages for that time? So, that is, you know, th, those are things that, that we've done in the past. Uh, the SRO program, I think, is vital. Um, the, the, the naysayers out there that call it the school-to-prison pipeline, I think, are completely wrong. The, the other thing with the SRO program's gotta be the right person. You can't put a road deputy in there. By road, I mean retired on active duty. And you can't put somebody in there that believes that that job is eight-four Monday through Friday, because it definitely is not. Give me a second. When I was the SRO, we had a sophomore in high school locked out of the front doors of the high school at about 2:00 in the afternoon, went home, committed suicide. That's not an eight-four day. That's a, we're opening the building. We, we ordered pizza. We had 300 kids in that building till about 11:30, 12 o'clock that night. And we were back there at 5:30 in the morning with the administrative staff saying, okay, what does today look like? How are we going to deal with today? Making sure we had counselors in place, we had counseling rooms in place. That one, that one gets to me just a little bit. TJ was, TJ was a great young man and will never understand why he did what he did. But those are the types of relationships that your SROs are building, with those kids, that carry them for life. I have, I have, I have, uh, young people, uh, young adults now that still reach out to me because of conversations I had with them while I was the SRO in their, in their school. I think it's important to not just focus on middle school, high school level. I think we need to be down in the, in the elementary schools as well. Uh, we were at Burns watching the volleyball game last night. Their SRO was line judging. I think that's fantastic. In their, in their sheriff's uniforms, standing over the red flag. I think it's awesome, um, to, to show the support of those students, no matter what they're doing. So that, that is something I am, I'm very passionate about. I think that canine is an unbelievable tool, um, as long as we're using it appropriately. One of the things that I noticed when I first got here is it seemed like every law enforcement vehicle I passed said canine on the side of it. I was like, does, does everyone have a canine partner? You know, how many, how many dogs do we have? Um, I think that you can overdo that program. And the canine program can be extremely costly. When you talk about death bills, when you talk about, uh, food, um, and the training that they have to go through on a monthly and weekly basis that they should be doing. Canines are an unbelievable resource to law enforcement all over. Um, one of the questions I would have is, do we have single-purpose dogs or do we have dual-purpose dogs? That, when, when we first started trying, we had the grant money, um, it was a matching grant that the, the city was gonna have to match. We, we were really wanting a dual-purpose dog, and the city told us they were only gonna match it if we did a single-person detection-only dog. I think that, that the dog, um, that canine, he is an officer. And he becomes that officer's partner. And he, he becomes that officer's backup. So, um, only having single-purpose dogs kinda cuts some of that out. But I think that they're, they're extremely important. I think that we sometimes, if, you know, if you've got, if you've got more than about two or three canine units in, in one agency, that, that may be too many in an agency this size. That may be too many. But that's, and, and from a budgetary standpoint, they, they do get expensive for sure.
Are there any other programs that we currently don't have that you'd be looking into?
Not necessarily. Um, I just think that, um, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of what we did, uh, developing our, our, uh, drug education program, I've, I've taken that and, and, and built onto some different things. I think that there are presentations that we could do in our schools. I have, I have a peer pressure presentation that is unbelievably effective and awesome. It gets super loud, so some teachers don't like it very well. But it's, it's peer pressure, it's internet safety, methamphetamine, basically all into one, uh, presentation. And taking those and using them and, and getting, getting our deputies to where they're speaking and they're teaching, I think is huge. And I don't think it necessarily needs to be the sheriff every time when somebody asks for, you know, if, if, if a club here in town says, hey, we need to, we need to learn more about this subject, that doesn't necessarily need to be the sheriff. A deputy can go and take that on and do the research. And I think it's an important piece of, of developing a deputy in public speaking and in their ability to research different things and put it all together. So, um, I think just reaching out to our community, what do they, what, what do you need, what do you need from us?
So, kinda transferring over from SRO and maybe a road, there's, I think that's a really important part of what the sheriff's office does is a community involvement. Another portion of community involvement is an aggressive stop or a violent stop or something like that. How does that work? What, what goes on? What would be the procedure if somebody gets into trouble out in the middle of nowhere with nobody around them?
That's, that's a, that's a tough question, but I think that, that, you know, the first thing that, that I think the, the officers that are in the room would tell you is that they've been trained, they've been trained to deal with, with those things, those aggressive stops that happen. In Nebraska, the easiest traffic stop I made in 20 years, 20-year career was at the academy. They, they didn't do a very good job of preparing me for that. But as you, as you get, uh, older, you get a little more experience under your belt. We can, we can de-escalate a lot of incidents just simply by how we present ourselves. If, if we present ourselves and the tone of voice that we take is, you know, accusatory or, or, or things like that, you're gonna escalate that. If we can speak in, in a tone that, that brings things down, we can start to de-escalate that situation while we have backup on the way. Those, those traffic stops that go bad, those ones that go south, um, and they usually happen very quickly. They happen in a matter of seconds. It's, you've, you've gotta have backup en route. Most of the time, by the time backup gets there, especially if they're, you know, clear out in the middle of the county or clear up north, you know, Glendo and out around the lake somewhere, your backup may be a long ways away. That, that incident's probably gonna be over. The first, the first piece that, uh, I as the sheriff, I wanna look at my deputy and I wanna make sure he's okay. Not, not, not just physically. We need to make sure he's okay mentally. Um, I don't think there's been enough of a, um, there, there hasn't been enough on the mental health of our officers. The things that they see, the things that they do every day that they can't mentally. So we need to make sure that they're okay physically and we need to make sure they're okay mentally. If that means taking them off the road for the remainder of that shift, if it remain, if it means taking them off the road for a day or two, then that's what we're gonna have to do. As far as, as the, you know, the public, um, if they have some sort of, I, I think that, that transparency as much as we can, obviously there are going to be things that are confidential items. But transparency as quickly and as much as we can is huge. Press releases, um, those types of things can't be delayed. If you wait a week to put out a, a press release on a major incident, you've already lost your community. So, uh, those things need to be, uh, shared. The information that can be shared needs to be shared as quickly as we possibly can.
You'll have direct supervision over the dispatch center. And in Platte County, our dispatch center currently dispatches for multiple agencies. How do you work with those other agencies to ensure that they're, you're meeting their needs?
Again, that's, you, you've got, you've gotta put some boots on the ground there, you know? As, as the person that, that supervises dispatch, we're gonna have to go to them and not, not necessarily expect them to come to us every time. We've gotta go to them and say, okay, is this doing what you need it to do? Is there something we need to approve? How can we help you do your job better? And, and I think that's, that's huge. If you can just maintain and they understand that they can come to you and you've opened up that line of communication with them, it, it's a big piece. Um, the, the dispatch center that, that we had there, again, was a county-wide one. It dispatched for seven fire departments, the police department, the sheriff's office, and the sheriff's office in the county next to us. So, having sat down with, with their director, I, I didn't have supervision over them, but having sat down and, and just had conversations with, with the director of their dispatch, that was one thing that, that she told me that went a long ways when she got there. She just opened that line of communication with every agency that they dispatched for. And, and said, don't hesitate. Even if you think it's a ridiculous request, put it out there. If it's ridiculous, I will, I will tell you, nope, we can't do that. But, you know, enter, enter, even the fact that you would entertain a ridiculous request, I think goes a long ways for, for some of those agencies.
Sheriff's, the sheriff is a, a job that doesn't necessarily stop, very similar to the SRO, that, that you become that, that position, right? If you're very, if you're doing it well, you become that position. So, with all the things that are going on and all the, the stuff, we have issues in the sheriff's office and it's not the deputies. It's, it's a lot of the things that we can't control. The pay, the hours, the, the life on staff, that, those are really big problems. And so the, the fastest way to deal with those problems right now is to be part of it and to be, and to jump in wherever you can. And so with all that said, do you think you're capable and are you interested in, in doing that? Are you interested in dedicating that much to becoming that person?
I think, um, and that's something I talked with, with my family about before we ever even joined into this. And it's, it's gone both directions. And there's, you know, we've had multiple conversations about it. But yes, you have to be, um, to go back to elementary school and use an elementary principal terminology, you gotta be a bucket filler. If you see an empty bucket, you gotta fill it. And if that means I gotta step into the shoes and, and I gotta, I gotta cover a night shift here, here and there for them, that's what it means. If we, if you, you know, there's, there's gonna be times where we're all gonna see an incident. Maybe we've never, never come across something like this before. We're all gonna have to put our heads together and, and work together to be able to get through that incident, to get through the, the investigation of that incident. Some of the most successful cases that we had, they were huge cases. Nobody could make heads or tails of them. So we, we started pulling road guys in. We're like, hey, you know, what do you see here? What, you know, how can we do this differently? Just being that person that can be that bucket filler to step into that place. Physically, I, I'm, I'm not as fast as I once was. None of us are. But mentally, I think I'm as sharp today as I was the very first day I stepped on the job. And I've got a ton of experience, um, that helps me get through each and every piece. Well, I will be the first to tell you that the technology that is available today, we didn't have when, when I left the agency in Sydney. So that's, that's going to be a learning curve for me. Uh, we were, we were talking about onboard computers and all of that stuff. Uh, we had never gotten there. I relied so heavily on my dispatch center to tell me what this person I was talking to, what they were about and all of that. And now it's, from the way I understand, it's kind of at their fingertips. Which, which is a nice, a nice thing, but it's gonna be a learning curve for me. And, you know, there's, there's some young guys in the, in, in that agency that can teach me. And I think that that is another, you know, going back to one of your earlier questions, don't, don't be the one that expects to teach them all the time. Let them teach me. And I think that's, that's a huge piece and we'll, we'll build that rapport that way as well. I'm not, I don't, I don't have 100% of the answers. And I don't claim to have 100% of the answers. And I don't have a problem with going to the people who may have.
Do you have any more questions?
I don't think so.
But I think at this time, um, because you're gonna be a public servant, if there's anybody in the audience that would have a question for you, certainly, um, we would appreciate any of those questions. And just, um, state your name and ask your question. Josh.
Josh Hopkins, Mayor of Chugwater. We've had some pretty good coverage recently since I got into office. And I think that probably is directed by the sheriff. I'm maybe learning about where some of these orders come from and who decides what and where they go. But as one of these outlying communities, regardless of any potential projects, anything else that we're gonna deal with uh, discuss, but I, I'd like to see this position. I don't know the questions to ask you or get any promises from you to say, how are you gonna protect our community? You know, but to say it is, and that's not really how I conduct interviews. I'm a lot less formal than these guys personally, but, um, there are outlying communities. I know Hartville's way up there, Glendo's out there. Uh, we're kind of the gateway to Platte County. We got a lot of interesting stuff at our rest area. And we just need to see continued coverage that we've had in those off-hours that people in the community have come to, rely on and expect and feel comfort in. And so on top of all the other stresses of the job and even just maintaining, in the largest community, uh, don't forget about us.
Right. And I, and I hear, I hear you, Josh, I do. Um, and I think that, that is, that's hugely important. One of the three different people that had the office of sheriff when I was with the police department in Sydney. Um, and I, and I took a lot from him. He was, he was a very intelligent man. But he, he sat these guys down and he said, he's like, Sydney has a police department. Potter does not. Dix does not, or Dix was actually in another county. Lodgepolt is not. Dalton, Curly, they do not have police departments. Let, let the local agency take care of what they need to take care of. You guys need to be out here in the county taking care of that, that stuff. And, you know, while I, while I still believe that if someone calls the sheriff's office from inside Cleveland, we're still gonna respond to that. If, if, uh, Chief Oats guys are on a call and it sounds like things are going south, our guys are gonna go there and back them up. That's, that's just the way it goes. But as far as coverage in those outlying areas, that is going to be one of those priorities in that first 90 days that, that we're gonna look at. How are we getting to Hartville? How much time are we spending there? You know, um, I was, I was down a, a few Saturdays ago, uh, Chugwater, we had our soccer down there. And I was, it felt good when the deputy kinda just, you know, just rolled through. And people there had lots to say about that. They're like, And people there had lots to say about that. They're like, we don't see that very often.
We've got a lot of good feedback.
My, yeah. My answer to that was, wouldn't it have been really cool if he had stopped and got out and come down here?
That's true.
You know, so those are things that I would, I would push our deputies to do. I'm not gonna say, hey, you gotta get out of guard. You gotta go talk to these people. You gotta do that. I'm gonna push them to do that. That's what helps maintain that and build that rapport with the community as well. Not that, not there to investigate anything. I'm not there to have a conversation that starts with, you have the right to remain silent. Just wanna see how things are doing. Appreciate that feedback. Thank you, Josh.
Marie Hamilton. I live in Chugwater, but I'm also the publisher for the Wyoming Sentinel. My question is, so Josh already knows, is the previous sheriff signed an MOU to be in the same office space as me? So, I've got two, two-part question. Are you gonna honor that MOU and are you gonna get deputy down there? And then the other part, as a resident, I live up on the flats. How often are you gonna increase patrols out there? Cause I've gotta give it to the deputies. There was an incident at my house, the one I'd gotten into it, and they responded super quick. And I love seeing them down there. They're a great guy down there. So, are you gonna continue that effort? Cause we've had some unfortunate events happen in Chugwater and up on the flats and, and you're our only law enforcement.
I think that you have to continue that effort. I don't think there's a choice. And, and if, if that effort wasn't being made in the past, I can't answer for why that was.
Oh, no, they definitely were.
But, but moving forward, absolutely. I did read in Sheriff Russell's farewell letter that he had worked with, had put substations in both Chugwater and Glendale. And, and I thought, you know, when I read it, I'm like, that's awesome. That's huge. Do they need to be staffed twenty-four hours a day? That's something we're gonna have to look at. I don't, I don't know if they need to be staffed twenty-four hours a day. We're gonna have to look at our call volume. We're gonna have to look at, at a whole lot of things. When we go to court, I see we got an attorney in the room. We talk about things like the totality of the circumstances and that's what we're gonna look at. We're gonna take it all in. We're gonna take a step back from it and we're gonna see the little pieces that maybe we missed when we were right up in the middle of it. And that's, you know, that's, that's how I handled my investigations when I got on scene. And, and no matter what the scene was, whether it was a simple assault, whether it was, you know, a felony assault, burglary, the first thing you gotta do is just, you gotta take, gotta take that step back, take it all in, see what's going on and do the best you can to fix any of the issues that are, that are there. I love the fact that there's a substation in Glendale. I love the fact that there's a substation in Chugwater. And we need to be, we need to be making sure we're patrolling those areas. Cause sometimes just simply, just simply seeing a law enforcement vehicle can stop somebody from doing something criminal.
Well, it'd be nice to see some of the fellows, you know, pop in and...
Sure. Absolutely. And those are things we can work with. Those are things that we can work on.
Any other questions?
Oh, I think between Marie and Josh, they took care of it.
Hi, Heather Chaddis, actually a resident of Guernsey. As any new management or shift in leadership within any entity, you're gonna expect growing pains. You may or may not see people come and go just based on new management, new leadership and how they line up with that or don't. With that being said, I think it'd be naive to ignore that fact. So, going into a position that's already really hurting from a staffing standpoint, if you have any of that additionally add to you in that first thirty, sixty, ninety days, how do you anticipate or what would be your steps to, you know, balance the need on the road with the very short staff you already have, but still honoring your commitments and your contracts, which is, you know, money in, which we can't stop when it comes to the jail? Also understanding you have an empty SRO position, how do you plan on jumping into that and being effective with results immediately? Knowing there might be additional challenges right out the gate?
The first thing that, that you have to, have to look at is, and the very first thing that I, that I look at are the people that we have, are they doing their jobs? Number one. Number two, are they performing to the best of their ability and the, and the way that they were trained? Those are, those are the three things that, that we can look at. And then we look at effort and attitude when they're there. And effort and attitude, truthfully, especially in, in law enforcement, those are the two things we can control. Our own effort and our own attitude. As people with a new manager, it doesn't matter who it is, whether it's myself, whether it's Tony, whether it's Jay, we're all gonna go through those growing pains. And I, I would actually, from day one, say, listen, I'm, I'm your, I'm new here, okay? And if you are looking at leaving just simply because I'm here, come talk to me before you do that. Come talk to me before you do that. Because some people get, you know, there are people that, that they just get, okay, there's a new manager, everything's gonna change. I like the way things are, I'm out. Before they even give it an opportunity. So, come talk to me before you leave. I would make sure that, that, that message is relayed to anyone and everyone that works there. When it comes to the, to the staffing issues, we are down in SRO. And again, we've, we've gotta find the right fit there. It can't, you can't just take someone and throw them into the school and say, there you go. Doesn't work that way. It's just like you can't take someone and throw them into the drug task force and say, go have fun and do drugs. You know, that's what you, you know, you can't do that. You have to find the right person. And so, you know, in getting to, to learn them, learn their personalities as we go, honestly, and, and I know we've got some deputies, I may ask them to take the Strength-Based Leadership Test just because that's, that's how I lead. I'm gonna take your weaknesses and we're gonna put them down here and you can work on them, but I'm gonna build you up based on your strengths. And if I don't know what those strengths are, it's hard for me to do that. So, you know, I think, I think we spend a lot of time saying, oh, this is my weakness. I need to fix that. Let's focus on your strengths. Let's, you know, focus on the strengths, the strengths that you already have. Let's use those to everyone's advantage and let's keep moving forward. And so, I guess, you know, to answer your question, I would invite them, please come talk to me before you make a decision to leave just simply because someone new is coming in.
Did you have a question?
Kind of a too far. First off, kudos to you for stepping up and being willing to even fill the role. I think it takes a lot of courage for any, all eight of those individuals to put their name in. Takes a lot of courage. So, as somebody who's outside the organization now, I am looking for some feedback. What you see is areas where we can trim budget, what's wasteful spending, not just for the sheriff's office, but county as a whole. We're looking at another round of cuts next year. And so, any input from the outside is always welcome.
You know, that's, that's a very, very difficult, difficult question because there are things that are being paid for that there is somebody that believes that's the most important thing on the planet. And so, I, I think you, what we'll have to do, and I, and I sat down and I, and I went through it. I, you know, I'm not, you and I talked, like with the sheriff's office, we're buying two new vehicles every year. And I can't imagine, I don't know on average how many miles we're putting on a vehicle every year. But I don't think two vehicles a year is, is out of line. And rotating them out, making sure that when they're responding to those hot calls, that they're not gonna have a mechanical failure because we have them in a ten-year-old vehicle that has two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles on it and we haven't been able to change the tires out in two years. Those things are important. Where can we trim it? Again, I'm not sure. It's gonna, it's gonna take some... We're really gonna have to think outside the box. It's, it's going to our school districts and saying, hey, we wanna continue these programs with it, you know, with the, with the SRO. How can you guys help us here? What can we do there? What, you know, what kind of MOU contract handshake deal, you know, whatever it is, how do we make this work both directions? And, and so, you know, if you've got another agency that's paying for half of an officer, that, that alleviates a, a little bit right there, right off the bat. So, as far as trimming and cutting, I think that's gonna take all of us, getting, getting our heads together, saying, okay, what, what, what is, you know, what is, what is bare bones important? And then let's work up from there.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Don asked up from Guernsey, Wyoming, former law enforcement caller, I unfortunately. The post situation. The post situation. So, if you're, if you challenge post and what, what are the, what are the avenues? Challenge it? If, if you challenge it, then you're gonna go there for what, two days, two weeks, two months? And if you aren't cha- outchallengable, you have to go through post completely. How long will you be gone from the sheriff's department in the full academy?
It's my understanding that the full academy is a sixteen-week academy. And I may be, I may be off, but Bradkey can back me up there that sixteen, it is sixteen weeks. The challenged, the, the challenged academy is, is you, you know, you go there, you take some tests. You're, there's certain, certain pieces of that, they're not going to let you test out of. And I wouldn't want to. There are, there are different laws in the state of Wyoming than there were in Nebraska. Nebraska, we're fortunate. We got one DUI law. It's about this long, but we only got one. And so, you know, learning those different intricacies of, of criminal and traffic law are gonna be huge. So, there are pieces of it, I don't wanna test out of. I wanna be in the classroom. I wanna be sitting there, learning it, taking it in. I'm also a person that doesn't do well. When, when I'm learning things, I need to have that book in front of me. So, that's important to me that I, that I'm carrying it, I see it, I read it. I don't know exactly what it looks like. Like I said, I've, I've reached out to the training center and I just, I think I caught them on an off day. Honestly, I think I might have called on Columbus Day. I don't remember exactly what day it was. So, if they weren't working, they weren't working. But I, I haven't, I haven't received that return call. I don't know exactly what it looks like if we challenge. If, if we challenge and, and lose, we're looking at sixteen weeks.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Just a quick question.
What?
Mr. Chairman, would you like to... I don't mind on taking the candidates who already answered questions. It was good last year.
I gotta go sit right in the ring. No, Brad won't give me his whistle either. Well, he gave me a whistle, I don't pee.
Okay, we'll get started again. Mr. Harrison, thank you for being here today and put your name in the hat for this very important position. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being the sheriff?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and be with all of you and have this honor to be in this process. The reason that I decided to take on this challenge is I feel that it's for the better good for everything I've done. I spent a lot of years in law enforcement and I believe in serving my community and making it better and safer for everybody. For me, it's been a calling to be in law enforcement. I have a deep faith in the Lord and, and so he keeps me going and directs me in the direction that I need to go. So, I leave it all to him on what's going on and I prayed a lot on this. And whether I needed to take this on or not, and I've been guided this way and that's why I'm here, is to make a positive difference. I'm not worried about the past and what's happened in the past or anything like that. I'm looking to the future and making it better for everybody in this county. I've committed to this state as well as to the county, as well as my community to be a part of this. I have family ties here and wanna continue serving here in, in a place that's my home now and I enjoy it and wanna continue to be here. But I'll get into a little bit of my background and where I come from. I spent forty years of my life in law enforcement. And you can imagine in that forty years that I have seen and done a lot in my career. I've been very fortunate in what I've seen and done and being a part of some of the people that have mentored me and helped me through my career. Started out and have grown up in sheriff's offices. I spent twenty years in two different sheriff's offices. So, I know a little bit about county service and helping people. And then that, when I started out as a young deputy, I worked my way up in being a field training officer and have done that pretty much all my career as training people. And I love doing that, is training and educating people in this, this profession. So, from there, I continued to work my way up in being a foreful, being a street supervisor, leading people out of the street, and then continued working my way up into administration where I've been a chief of police and a deputy chief and run dispatch centers and have also run investigations units. Obviously, in those investigation units, we've, we've done quite a bit. So, we've worked homicides, bankruptcies, sexual assaults, everything that you can imagine. But I've also been in small towns where I've been chief and worked with my communities where it's either been just me or a couple of officers that I've worked with. And then I've worked in metro areas where we run a call, a call, a call, and there's always something pending and something going on. So, I've had a lot of, of different experiences through my career. I've also had the opportunity of working with federal agencies. I've worked with the DEA on their, their drug task force, where we did a lot of drug interceptions and things like that. So, I've had the pleasure of working with them. I also have been working with Secret Service where I was the liaison for when the presidents, Bush, Obama, and whenever they came into town, I was the one that coordinated the security sweeps and details with Secret Service and making sure that the areas that they had competed, what president was gonna be in was gonna be safe places to be. So, a lot of opportunities with that. Worked with other agencies, whether it be Colorado Bureau of Investigations or different things. Been involved with my, my officers in a lot of different things, whether it's officers involved shootings, investigating homicides, all that kinda stuff. So, it's been a very good career. For me also, what I enjoy is, I'm an instructor. I instructed eleven different areas of law enforcement. I've instructed in three different police academies. And that's kinda my passion too, is with my forty years of experience and all the things that I've done, is I'd like to pass all my knowledge and experience to the next generation so that they can be good officers and develop themselves too. So, that's, that's kinda my history, what I've been doing in the last forty years. And I'm happy to be here and take on the challenges of what might be ahead of us.
What would your visibility be like out in the community, your, your availability?
Well, as it is here in Guernsey, for me, I mean, I'm out there right now, I'm on call twenty-four seven. I'm always out there taking calls and stuff. But even in, in this environment with Platte County, I'm gonna be out with the officers and working with them. And also taking on the challenges of the administration part of the sheriff's office and the detention part of the sheriff's office. It's going to be working with all the communities, whether it be Guernsey, Wieland, Chugwater, Glendale, Hartville. I'm gonna be visible going to their meetings and... and seeing what their concerns are and what their needs are. So, I'm gonna be out there with the people. I need to be with the people. I need to communicate with the people. That, to me, is key to having a good relationship with the community, with the county, is talking to all the people in the county and seeing what their needs are and what their concerns are. So, I'm gonna be very visible. I'm gonna be very available to everybody that needs to talk to me and working well with, obviously, the, the commissioners.
How important do you think it is for, you talked about visibility. How important do you think it is for either response or being out there or, what's your position right now?
I'm the chief of police.
Okay. How, how important do you think it is to respond to calls and stuff like that?
Well, I have to have trust in, in the people that work for me, making sure that, you know, uh, that they're out doing what they need to do, whether it's supervisors or deputies or officers. And have them go out, but I'm gonna be their support for me. I'm gonna make sure that they have all the tools, the things that they need. Uh, if I go to a call with them and they're there first and they're taking charge, what do you need? I'm gonna help you out with what, if I need to get involved and be more active in that call, then I'll take it and do what I need to do on it. But it's to make sure that they have the support and the tools that they need to do the job.
So how have you, how have you furthered that response and visibility as your, as your current position?
I'm always out there. I'm always involved with the people. Uh, every time that, that somebody calls needing to talk to me, I respond to them. And it's usually that same day, even if I'm off duty or something like that. Dispatch advises me that, hey, somebody wants to talk to you. All right, let's talk. And that's what my job is, is to communicate with the community and people. And if they have concerns, I need to address those.
This, this interview process is not like most other interview processes, where we're hiring a deputy or anything like that. We can basically ask any question we would like to try and gain visibility into your life, your character, your, how you operate, right? And so, one of the things I would like to address is that we've had, I've had calls from a lot of people saying that you are not the guy that's going to show up. You are the guy that's going to leave a call on hold for twelve hours. So, how do I rectify those two stories? The one that you're giving me where you say you usually take care of a call on the first day, and the people, usually it's the operative word there, right? So, why have you put calls on hold or, that's my version of it. Why, why am I getting stories that people are not getting any response from you in Guernsey?
Well, I would, I would disagree with that fact because I, I, I understand. I feel that I don't, um, if there is a delay, it's only because, right now, even at this point in time, uh, or as of last night midnight, for the past eighteen days, I've been the only officer on. Cause my other officers on vacation, one of them retired. Um, and if something's put on hold, it's either because I'm on days off and it's something that doesn't need my immediate attention. However, I do communicate with those people and let them know what is going on so that they're aware that, hey, I might not come and see you today or respond to your house, but I will be there as soon as I come on and tell me what you have. So we communicate and we understand what's going on. It's not that we ignore them or we don't handle their call or anything like that, and it does get taken care of.
So specifically, which calls have you not responded to and why in the last two or three months specifically?
Um, I'm trying to think of a specific call that I've been, haven't gone to recently. Uh, one was probably where a, my family was a, a dog that was running at large. And this was on my day off. Uh, I did go out and look for it, couldn't find it, got a call again on it. I didn't respond the second time because, you know, I wasn't gonna be able to find this dog. He didn't tell me exactly where it was at.
Sure.
So, yeah, I didn't come out the second time on that dog.
Any other ones?
Not that I can recall.
Okay.
What would be your top three priorities in, say, the first five months?
Well, obviously, it's one of the issues that the county or the sheriff's office has, as well as other law enforcement agencies here in the state, is, is getting, uh, fully staffed. Um, so we want to make sure that we're gonna find quality people to fill positions that we need so that we're not stressing and straining, uh, deputies that may be out there working overtime, whether it be in the jail or even on the street. So that's a big challenge, is just finding good quality people to come in and get them trained up.
As they are now.
So, and, and retaining the quality of people and making sure that, uh, they have all the tools, uh, the training that they need to do the job efficiently. So, uh, first of all, again, it's filling those positions. Second of all, is, is making sure that we're getting good quality training for these guys. Uh, I find that an issue here, since I've been here in Wyoming, uh, both times that I've been here, is getting some good quality training. It's very expensive to get that training. Unlike where I came from, where there was huge budgets and we could get, uh, officers to train. Their classes are on average like five hundred dollars, you know, for one day. And that doesn't count maybe travel or stay, lodging, things like that. And it crushes my budget as well as some of the other agencies. When you're trying to send one officer to a training center, it's gonna cost you a thousand dollars. And I don't have a lot of money in my budget, but I wanna make sure that, uh, we're getting that good quality training. And this is one of the things that I've been working on while in Guernsey, is I wanna bring to the state a emergency service training center. And I've been working with Kent Guernsey on that so that we, not only for law enforcement, but for fire, ambulance, and everybody else, uh, is having a state training center that we can have some advanced training for law enforcement, fire officials, and UTEs.
You brought up budget a couple of times. Um, speaking of that, have you taken the time to look at the budget, budget versus actual and see what this is standing? Cause you know, if you're appointed to this, you're gonna hang your thumb on this for the next nine months.
Exactly.
So, have, have you done that?
Not, not with the sheriff's office. Obviously, with my budgets in the past. And being a chief of police as well as a deputy chief, it was my responsibility to deal with budgets.
But the county's budget for that, three budgets going forward, you haven't done that?
I haven't. I've worked with, I, since I haven't been a sheriff, I haven't worked with three different budgets, but I have worked with budgets in my personal business as well as in, in my departments that I've worked for.
Yeah, well, my question is, this, these three budgets going forward from this appointment, if it happened, have you looked at budget versus actual?
I have not yet.
Okay, thank you. How would you, um, what kind of programs are, or, um, would you put into place to retain employees and recruit employees?
Well, I, I've always, uh, worked outside the box and, and tried to get good recruits to come in here. I've gone to academies in other states to, those academies that, uh, the students are required are, aren't sponsored by other, by the law enforcement agencies that hired them. So they're independents. We try to get those in. So, um, I, I like to work outside the box to find good quality people and go out and, uh, find them in every way possible. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
And how would you retain employees and recruit employees?
Uh, it's always been a challenge, and, and I've had an exceptional mentor in the place though. When I worked for the Ralph County Sheriff's Office, uh, as a deputy there, pay was terrible. Uh, we were struggling from paycheck to paycheck. And I worked for a sheriff that, uh, was a great mentor of mine. Nobody left that sheriff's office because of the leader that he was. And he passed a lot of those qualities on to me as well as some of the other deputies. So, I, I need to find those incentives and support these deputies and officers in the job that they're doing, um, to get them to stay, given the training that they need, the equipment that they need. And I've done that in the past when I was working as a deputy chief in Trinidad. And I came in there and we're not a, a big budgeted department. Those officers didn't have shotguns, rifles, computers in their cars or anything. They were basically back ten to fifteen years behind what other law enforcement agencies were. And I didn't have it within my budget to buy that stuff. I was able to go out and equip those officers with shotguns, rifles, they needed to protect themselves. And I was also able to go out at no cost and say, and get computers for every car, but not just for the police cars, but for every fire truck that was in town and every ambulance that was in town. So it wasn't just my department that was spending. It was all of the communities, all of the emergency services. So I find ways to get around not having the money in my budget, but getting the equipment and the training that's needed for these guys. Whether it's through grants, um, you know, like the cops program where we can hire more cops, that they supplement us in getting those people on the street or whatever you need, so.
What's your opinion on outside private money in, in a department like that? Do you think anything's owed to them, or do you think it's charitable? Or what's your position on that stuff?
I've had, uh, outside, uh, organizations that have, when I was a K nine handler and instructor, that have donated either dogs or training and equipment to us. Uh, I don't feel that we owe them any favors or anything like that. They just wanna contribute to their community and help us out. And, uh, you know, I either donate the dogs to training, uh, best for the dogs and things like that. Back the Blue is a big contributor for things like that, but we don't owe them anything. So, but we appreciate the fact that they wanna help out their community and keep us safe, so.
Why'd you run as a Democrat in Colorado?
At that time, uh, the Republican Party, which I was a Republican before that, um, was pretty locked up. And I knew that I would have no chance in primary because of the candidates that they picked. But I felt that it was still something that, uh, I needed to take on that challenge. I did have a tremendous support from the Republican Party, even though I ran as a Democrat, uh, and did very well in the race, but however, I didn't make it there.
So, do you, my, my question's gonna be about integrity and, and stuff like that. I have a hard time. What you just said was that I, I couldn't get in as a Republican, so I went as a Democrat. And, and I may be misrepresenting what you're saying, but, so I just flocked around. So does that mean that you believe in the values of that party and this party or where you just came in the system to get? And, and where I'm going with that is that if I see a guy who, who is wishy-washy enough to change, to get more of a, uh, successful campaign by changing, you know, working the system, that makes me worried that your integrity is, don't worry, I say this, but don't worry, I'm still a Republican or something like that. But we do have problems with being able to testify in court sometimes if there's a matter of integrity on the line. And so, my question to you is that that seems to me like you're misrepresenting to someone somewhere, or, or, let me just put it bluntly, you're lying. So which, what, what are, is it just, I, I thought I had a better chance? And so I, I ran as a Democrat and now I have a better chance in Wheatland, so I'm running as a Republican? You see what I'm saying? I can't, I don't understand what you believe and what you don't.
I understand.
If you, you know, are back and forth just to further your, your own self-interest, that's a red flag for me.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand what your concerns are. And I've never run on party lines. So, whether it be Republican, I run on my beliefs, my honor, my integrity, and where I think things could be. So do I agree totally with everything that Republicans do or the Democrats do? No, I don't. But I do have, believe in my honor, my integrity. I've never had a challenge in court or with integrity. I've never been braided in court. Uh, so, and, and I, I don't lie. I, it's just one of those things that I don't. And that's part of my faith. It doesn't matter. I don't care what anybody else says. So, if you wanna talk to me, I'll tell you the truth and I'll tell you where I come from. And that's the way I ran my campaign. If I disagreed with the Democrat Party and what they were saying while I was campaigning, I would tell people, this is how I feel about it. This is where I am coming from. I'm not, it's not necessarily part, because that position, this position isn't based upon parties. It's based upon serving the community. Whether you're Republican, Democrat, independent, it doesn't matter to me. I'm going to serve you in the most unbiased way and the fairest way and the just way that should be done. So, uh, but again, my, my integrity has never really been challenged, so.
I'm, I'm challenging it today.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That seems very, that seems very fishy to me that you are not set, you don't have enough, this is me speaking, but you don't have enough integrity to stick by something, right? So I, I don't know if I can trust you because if there's something that's in your favor that you want, that you think is a good idea, I don't know you very well. So what's, what are you gonna tell me that's not either in full faith and confidence and then go around tomorrow and do something that furthers your interests? That's what I'm worried about.
I understand. I understand. And, and if this was me just considering this position as for my own personal gain or, uh, I guess that's what I could say is my personal gain, that's, that's not why I chose to get involved in this.
So why did you?
Because I feel like I could do a great job for the people in Platte County in bringing, uh, my experience, my knowledge to the county and making it a safer and better place for everybody to live. Regardless of what party we're representing.
I don't, I don't care what you run as, but it's a discrepancy that bothers me. But I, 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 I think I get you. I, I understand where you're coming from.
I left the politics and all the chaos, and I'm a refugee from Colorado because of all the things that are going on there, to come here with a huge pay cut, to have a better life for myself and to continue, continue serving the community that I'm in. Uh, it wasn't a matter of money or anything like that. It's, and after forty years, I could easily retire. I can go on to something else. But that's not, I'm, I like serving. I enjoy teaching and, and bringing in my experience to the next generation. And that's what's more concerning to me, is making sure that this community's safe and that their, their concerns are taken care of. And I don't care, you know, what background, religion, race, or anything like that. It doesn't matter to me, or even their political views. Once, if even as my position as chief, none of that matters to me. I don't worry about that stuff. I just make sure that they're taken care of. So, um, I do understand your concerns, um, but I'm not in it for the money. I'm not in it for the power. I'm not in it for anything else. I'm in it because of my faith and what I feel I need to do to best serve the community and to, to serve the Lord that has blessed me so much, so.
Thank you.
So you'll be supervising the sheriff's department, the detention center, and dispatch? And they have relationships with other agencies, whether they're local agencies, you know, the Wheatland PD, the Guernsey PD, the fire departments, as far as dispatch goes, the federal partners that we house inmates for. And then, how do you build those relationships and ensure that, um, those other agencies have a say in how those operations occur?
Yes, sir. When I was a deputy chief in Trinidad, that's, that was one of my positions, was to run dispatch. It's similar to what it is here in Platte County, where we dispatch not only for the city, but we dispatch for the county, fire and ambulance. So, obviously, each one of those, uh, agencies had stakes in, in dispatch and their concerns and needs and what they, and how they wanted things to be dispatched. So I did work with each agency, whether it was the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Office, the different fire agencies, whether they were rural or city, and their needs in communications, uh, and, and as well as the ambulance services that were there in town, as well as the highway patrol and, uh, Division of Wildlife things out there. So, we did do some dispatching for them. Uh, we also worked with, uh, Pueblo, that adds, if our system would go down, then they would help us out and vice versa, we helped them. So, we had to develop a lot of relationships with different agencies and communities. Um, matter of fact, uh, Chief Matt Johnson is a friend of mine. We worked together in Colorado. Uh, when he saw that I was one of the candidates, he sort of used up to me and wanted to, and got some communications with his county, is that his dispatch center does the same thing as what they do here. Well, he runs the dispatch center, cause they dispatch for the county. So you brought some interesting concepts to me that I need to look into, um, or whichever candidate it is you bring on as the sheriff, people will talk to them as well. So, uh, any challenges that came up, we, we took on those challenges that came up from other agencies. We worked on them together. We solved those. Never had any issues with the other agencies in communications and running our dispatch center, as well as working with the federal agencies in our dispatch center, so. center, as well as working with the federal agencies in our dispatch center, so.
Concerning, you know, staffing and departmental relations and whatnot, I guess you've had some challenges in Guernsey with your staffing issues and the like. Not going to get into that. But, you know, with that being said, and happened, how are you going to create a healthy environment to bring morale up here, help remove fear, if there is any, and address any kind of a burnout that some of these guys, I'm sure, are right on the edge of right now? How do you attack that? How do you address that?
It's always tough. I mean, obviously, growing up in Sheriff's Office, I knew when there was changes coming, and whether a new sheriff was coming in, there was always concerns of like, okay, what kind of big changes are going to happen, and how are we going to deal with that? So I understand that there's going to be some tension maybe with the new sheriff that comes in, and what's going to be expected of deputies. I want them to know that I'm going to support them 100% and address each one of their concerns, because every one of them has their own concerns and needs and things like that. But I need to communicate with them as well as them communicating with me, understanding where they're coming from, what their needs are, and what their concerns are, and how we can solve those together and work together. But it's important, I want to make sure that I'm behind them when I'm in a situation. My needs in Guernsey were the same thing. Officers come in, it's down, I'm down to just one now, because I have one retired medically. And then we had one that came over to Sheriff's Office, and, you know, my fact is, I want to support these guys. Even if they decide that they want to go and do something else, I will help them get to where they need to be. If they want to be promoted, I'm going to help them and do everything I can to get them in a position to where they can be promoted, or move on to the next step, or special units or something like that. I want to help develop them into being the best deputies that they can possibly be, and get to where they want to be. So, but I need to communicate with them.
Could you speak a little bit about the specialized programs like the SRO and the K-9 unit? And are there any other programs that we currently don't have that you'd be interested in looking into?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I've been a part of the different programs. We had SROs in the agencies, and I fully support those. It's a great program to have in the schools, so we have those direct contacts and relationships with the schools and the kids. I've been a K-9 guy forever. I had my own personal business where I had kennels, and I was selling and trading K-9s to law enforcement. But I was also the special unit supervisor for K-9, and did a lot of that for the government as well. And I believe in K-9. If it was me, and I think every officer, every deputy out there should have a partner, a K-9 partner on the street with them. It's a valuable program to have K-9 out there. We have done so many incredible things with our dogs that have helped our community, whether it's drugs, explosives, or other things, or even just public relations. We would take our dogs to the schools, other community activities and stuff, and do demonstrations for them, and let them see what the dogs' abilities are and what they bring to our agency. Very, very valuable things. Even other programs, if we needed to get things in, we had an explosive program, so we get deputies here that can maybe identify that if this is truly an explosive and dangerous situation or not, then we need to get people specializing in different areas and doing different things. So I do support SROs, K-9s, and other programs.
Do you have any other questions? I just have one other question. As commissioners, we always hear from people in the county, you know, if Malcolm's doing something wrong in his office, people come to us. But we really don't have any control over how Malcolm operates his office. We get complaints about the Sheriff's Office all the time. One of the biggest complaints we get is that we don't see the patrol deputies out on those back county roads near as much as we would like to. Would you have a plan to address that?
I do. I do. Again, it's probably going to be based upon the number of deputies that I have, on how each plan would be. I mean, when you only have so many deputies, obviously, you have one deputy on at night for the entire county. It's kind of tough to have them in an area where it's more beneficial to have them centralized, so that they can respond to a call more efficiently than having them on the far ends of the county where they got to be maybe in Melondo, and maybe down in Chugwater or something like that. So, to get the, fully staffed, and then once we're fully staffed, is dividing up the county into certain areas, districts, to where the deputies are going to cover those areas and not be, obviously, we'll be partnered with the cities and towns, whether it's Guernsey or Wheatland or something like that, because they have their responsibilities, and we'll work closely with them. And also, my intention would be to help or commission these guys so that they can assist more, and we have a more unified law enforcement, public service response to anybody out there. But, yeah, getting the county divided up to where we can respond to be more effective, getting deputies out to the northern part of the counties or something like that, to where we even see the borders of our counties, whether it be on the west side, where it's remote, up north where it's remote, or even south, you know, past Chugwater or something like that, to where they get out. And it's, I'm the kind of guy that I like to get out there and visit with the community. I will go to the remote parts of the county and talk to people. If they have a church community setting or something like that, I will go into those places and talk to those people, and see what their concerns and things like that. But I want to be visible. I'm not just talking about me, but the office to be visible. And getting, in the past, where I've been in some agencies with Sheriff's Office, it seems that the deputies wanted to kind of linger around the cities where a lot of the action was, and not be out in the county. The city can handle their stuff. If they need our help, we'll help them. But we need to be out in the county and responsible to those people out in the county.
You talked about, I think when Commissioner Jolovich was asking about response times and things, that you kind of have to make a judgment as to, is this really important? Can I put it off till the next day, or... But you talked about, you know, maybe it was your day off, that if it wasn't super important, you'd put it up. As an elected official, are there any days off?
No. No. Not at all. I really don't take any days off now. I still take calls, complaints, and things like that, even on my days off. Even when I've been on vacation out of state, I still answer my calls from my officers, or even the community. You know, a town hall called and say, "Hey, somebody's complaining," or "They need some answers or some help." I will respond to that. So it's a huge responsibility, and I accept that responsibility. And I want to be accountable to the people here. Otherwise, I wouldn't be putting in for this if I didn't want to be bothered with it. But I am responsible, and if you put me in that position, that's when I'll be, I'll be available to everybody. I'll be available to you and respond to your concerns and your needs, and I want to be close to the three of you in solving whatever problems that may come up. I know that there are some things we talked about that are coming up with Chugwater, talking to them, they are there in our last meeting, and what the challenges they may be coming up with, with windmills and stuff like that. So there's a lot of things that we're going to have to address and work on together and solve some problems, and meet those challenges as best we can.
Thank you. I think at this time, because this is an elected public position, I'm going to open it up for anybody in the public that would have questions. So if you have questions, just state your name and ask your question.
Joshua Hopkins, Mayor of Chugwater. So I heard it mentioned by Chairman Shockley, that addressing the day off concept. So it's just a, even though I think it was just discussed a moment ago, I need to represent my constituency and the people who live near us who need some representation, who don't necessarily live in town. But as a public official in Flat County, someone who's relatively new to this, there isn't a concept of a day off and the compensation, especially for somebody in what I'd say a chief position, whether you're a commissioner or a mayor, someone who needs a lead by example. And we, we need to see that sometimes, and actually more often from, and we saw it quite a bit from David Russell. And it's something I think we want to continue to see. If I have a situation where I may personally call you, and maybe it's not a day you're on shift, I don't know exactly how it works with the Sheriff's Office, but I would be able to call him and say, "I need you at my meeting tonight, and it's your day off. And, and I need you to understand that." And I may not be able to go into details, and I say, "I need you there. I need you to stay the entire time. And I need you to be vigilant in that meeting, and making sure that the public and the council are safe and everything goes a certain way." And I say, "I don't want anyone else but you." And it's a day off for you on your shift. Are you going to be there? Are you going to be able to tell the people of Chugwater and anybody else who might be there that you personally will be there, even if it's miserable and inconvenient?
Absolutely. I mean, right now, for over 20 days, it's been me on 24-hour call, whether I'm working on a 10-hour shift or not. Even after that 10-hour shift, and the outbreak is a week ago on my day off, I had six callouts. And I went to each call on my day off. And I got phone calls in those times too. I just wanted to get every phone call, and every call that was necessary to go to at the time, if it was one to where I could put off. I did communicate with those people, tell them, "Okay, what do you have? What's going on? Here's how I can help, and here's what I want to do." It doesn't require an immediate response, but your situation is being taken care of. And that may be a call where I just call another person to talk to them, to assault. But if you need me, and I understand the responsibilities, not only in being the chief of police, but being the sheriff, if I'm needed, what my responsibilities are, is to be there for the community. I rarely ever take three days off. I take one week of vacations. I did this year. I went to North Carolina, and then after that, I've been here the entire time. And I respond to everything. The Sheriff's Office has been kind to me, so that when I am on call, and I need to go from, let's say, Guernsey into Wheatland to do, to go to Baumgarde or something, to get some critter food or something like that, I have to have them covered for me while I'm gone. So I come into town, get my stuff, get right back into Guernsey, so that I can take care of it, and not leave them responsible for what I'm responsible for. So I work with them. But I am guaranteeing to you, I'm promising you, that if you need me and want me, I will be there.
I just want to make it very clear is that it's, these types of jobs, we need to lead by example, and it's going to be an exhausting job. There's days where I might be out making sure the cracks are getting sealed properly, and there's just, there's no thought of compensation time or otherwise. And I think that's the kind of responsibility people want to see, especially from a law enforcement protective standpoint, because even more so, we need you, the people who rely on you to do those things. So I think that's something that my constituency and the people nearby, certainly, impart on that position.
Hi, Jake Murray. So I have a two-part question. One part being is that David had signed the MOU with Chugwater to have a substation there. I'm wondering what your plans are to get that staff? I'm not looking for 24/7, because I shared the office space with that other office. So I'm just wondering what your plans are to get someone in there? And then also, what your plans are to continue the pretty good coverage from the Sheriff's Department that we have? Because I'm Chugwater, but I'm on the flats.
Right.
So we really liked the response that we've had from the Sheriff's Department all summer. So we're kind of wondering what plans we have to continue that for.
You know, staffing is always an issue, but I am in favor and agree that there should be maybe a substation in Chugwater, as well as Glendale. So, because that's where a lot of the calls are coming from, around Wheatland, Chugwater, Glendale. And even, there's still some concerns and heartaches and stuff like that, but we, if I could have a substation in Guernsey as well, you know, and have Guernsey Police Department help it out when they can. But yes, I want to put somebody, and as staffing meets, we'll get there as soon as we can, and putting somebody there, maybe like a, like they do in Campbell County, where they have a resident deputy that's living in Chugwater, or a resident deputy that's living in Glendale, or something like that. We'll work for, towards those things, taking on those challenges of having the number of staffing that we need. And right now, we're still, the county's short in staffing. So that is absurd, but we're going to work towards getting our staffing towards full, and then making sure that we have, with the challenges that I know Chugwater's going to be having with what they're working on, and getting somebody there to make sure that we don't have an issue there in Chugwater with pride. So I don't argue with Glendale, because I know in the summertime, with all the people that come in in Glendale, it would be nice to have a deputy that's maybe stationed up there in Glendale, as well as one in Chugwater.
Yeah, we've got that rest out there. Ask Josh. It's actually fun sometimes.
Any other questions?
Hi, Kathy Anderson. In your tenure as chief in Guernsey, how have you improved the department? And I have a second-fold question later. Why did the citizens of Guernsey feel like they needed to establish their own neighborhood watch?
That's something I've worked with them. As a matter of fact, one of our council members was one of the initial people that wanted to get it going. They know that we don't have 24-hour coverage, and so they wanted to help out with the department. We work closely with them. I've gone to their meetings and tell them, "Hey, this is how you can help us." And when we did have issues, they haven't been very active lately, because things have kind of quieted down, but they do pick up from time to time. And it's been a very good program. I've always supported neighborhood watches within every agency that I've been with, because we have that relationship with them. But we can also educate them as to what helps us when something does happen. This is the type of information that I need, so that I can follow through and get this taken care of, maybe lead to, you know, arresting somebody, to where they will have that education, and they don't know what to give us, and it makes it much more difficult for us. Even in my mother's neighborhood, they have a neighborhood watch, and, you know, we're a part of that too. It's a great program, and I want to see it everywhere, whether it's in Chugwater, whether it's Glendale, Guernsey, whatever, you know. As far as your question, in my time in Guernsey, we have made some changes. Again, I don't like to dwell on the past or anything. I want to make improvements there. We have improved in some of our equipment that we have with our patrol cars, as well as our firearms and things like that. We have increased our training. I brought in training that we didn't have before, which is online. The other training, we'd have to go somewhere to get that. But now we can meet a lot of our training needs through online training that we get credit through from post, so that my officers don't necessarily have to leave town, and I have to pay for them to leave town. It's just a subscription that we have. But I'm able to get them that continuing education, so they can maintain their post at a low cost for us. So again, training is huge for me, and making sure that the officers have that, so that they can continue on and making their improvements and stuff. But as you know, I've been there for two and a half years in Guernsey, working with town council and bringing things in. We're bringing in the K-9 unit there. We've been working on that for a little while, because I've had some issues with DEA, who's giving me a rough time about that, but we finally got past that. DCI's been wonderful with us. We're, things are going great with that program right now. Even if I was to leave there, I'm going to continue on in making sure that Guernsey's K-9 program continues on and becomes a great success. I have a passion for K-9s, because that's what I do. I've been doing that for 30 years, training dogs and handlers and stuff.
Any other questions?
I have a two-parter. So first off, kudos for stepping up. I think all eight individuals, both their name and, deserve that recognition. That's a tough decision to make, so kudos to you. Looking at next year, it looks like we're going to have another round of tax cuts, so obviously, we're going to have to cut budgets. And so my question is, as somebody outside the organization, what's just something that appears obvious that we can cut? Not just from the Sheriff's Office, but the county as a whole? I guess the basic question is, what's the rumored wasteful spending in the county?
Ah, you know, of course, I'm outside, and I don't hear a lot of what the wasteful spending is or anything like that. But understanding that we may not have a budget that we need or would like, or that is expected because of cuts or whatever. There are other things we can do. As I'm sure you're well aware of, there's grants and other things that we can do to maybe help us out and supplement what we need. If we do find that there's some programs that aren't as effective, or maybe aren't getting the return that we want on them, then we might look at having to cut those. But the primary thing is, I want to make sure that the community's safe, that we are getting a response to the needs of the public out there for their law enforcement safety. So I won't skip on that. I will make sure that we, first thing is, that we have the deputies to respond to these things, and get those taken care of, and keep people safe, and making sure that they have the tools that they need to do their job the best that they can, as well as the education that they need. That's where I'm not going to skip. That's where I'm not gonna skip on, is making sure that we have the people on the street, we have the ability to do what they need to do. Anything else outside of that, that we'll look at, and maybe, you know, if we need to partner up with other federal agencies, then we'll do what we can. Thank you.
Don Issa from Guernsey. Camp Guernsey itself is a unique situation as far as jurisdictional boundaries. Can you explain the jurisdictional boundaries retained at Camp Guernsey? How the city, the county, the state, and the feds all kind of evolve around that?
Well, we are, we work with, as well as what the sheriff's office does, we work with the camp on, you know, any crimes or things, incidents that may occur on it. Right now, what we have with an agreement with the camp is that they're, what they call their "tombstone area", which is the basic camp area. We will respond to any issues that they have on that area. So if they have, you know, like vehicle accidents, or-
Okay, traffic accidents, example.
We go in and we'll take care of that. A small part of the camp is in the city. Now, if it's something out on the ranges, whether it be up north, or it's, you know, around their firearm range, it's just outside of town, the sheriff's office, they do respond to that. We work with them on whatever responses are, you know. If we need help, we'll call them, if they need help, they'll call us. But, we have a real good relationship, and, you know, I have a great relationship with the colonel there too, so. And that's who I was working with as far as getting maybe an emergency service training center with the camp, there on camp, and with the town of Guernsey, the properties that they have, so that we can provide better training for everybody in emergency services here in the county.
Okay, would you be willing to, are you able to address a situation, as I understand, occurred last week? There was a traffic accident, you were contacted. You basically did not respond, and the sheriff's department had responsibility to come out and take the accident report?
I'm not aware of it, so-
Okay, if you'd like to be specific, so.
Please, please do, because I'm unaware. Okay, thank you. I did go to an accident over in camp where their gate fell down.
Yes, exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I responded to that.
Okay, and you didn't take the report, or you did take the-
I did take the report. The report was given to the person that had their vehicle damaged.
My, my, I was advised that you didn't, and they had to contact the sheriff's department?
No, my, no, that's not what happened. I did go out, I did respond, I did take the report. All the reports were turned in to inappropriate people.
Thank you.
Lisa DiGio, question?
Lisa Phelps, Black County Record Times. So, there's been concern or questions about the stress on the deputies and the staff for shortage of numbers of people and mental health and stuff. How would you want to address that or work with that ahead of time, before there's an issue that occurs?
Well, I need to work with the deputies on that. I mean, obviously, each deputy has their own, you know, concerns and needs and things like that, but we have to work together and figure out what's working best for them. We still have to, you know, commit to the people here in the county on how we're gonna provide that service, but I wanna make sure that the deputies, one, are burned out, you know, that they're overcommitted to things, and that they're maybe having mental issues or something like, mental health issues on the stresses that come with them. I've experienced that myself, obviously, when I'm, from last July to November, it was just me in town in Guernsey, because I'd lost my people. So I was covering everything, and yeah, I was experiencing burnout, because I couldn't leave. I had to stay there, couldn't go on the vacation guide. I was kinda trapped in that town, and it, yeah, wears on me. And I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen to the deputies either, you know. I wanna make sure, okay, if you need time off, if you need time off, I'll get you that time off in some way. Even if I have to come out and cover your shift, so that you can have time to go to your kid's, you know, graduation or whatever else. They're a priority for me. I wanna make sure that they're taken care of, because they are the foot soldiers out there. They are the ones that are out there taking care of you. And if I'm not taking care of them, they can't take care of you. So that is a priority of mine, to make sure that they are out there, and they're feeling good about their job, they're happy about it, and we're doing everything that we can to make them be healthy and secure in a job. And I know there's gonna be concerns with the changes and stuff like that. I'm sure that, hey, it's gonna be okay, everything's gonna be okay, don't worry about things, so.
Any other questions?
Heather Chavez from Guernsey. I guess kind of piggybacking on that, obviously, as I asked the last candidate, I guess, or applicant, with any shift in leadership management, there's always going to be some hurdles, there's gonna be growing pains. We'd be naive, we'd be naive to not anticipate those. So, in your anticipation, what is your plan in the next thirty, sixty, ninety days, as if you were to be appointed and take over? Like, what is that going to do to the current staff? Who's gonna stay, who's not going to, who's going to follow your lead? And if they don't, you're already leading staff, you're already short-staffed, you're understaffed, and you have an SRO position that's wide open. How are you going to move forward in that, as well as, for you specifically, I'm gonna second that, and what does that mean for Guernsey? Like, are you planning on putting in two weeks? Is this something you're gonna leave right away? That's gonna leave one officer in Guernsey, we're already too short. So how is that gonna be evolved within your plan to make sure that that doesn't become the next big issue?
Yeah, and for the last part of that, I have talked to the council, and they are aware of what I'm doing here. And I told them, "I'm not gonna abandon you. We are not gonna leave Guernsey uncovered or anything like that. I'm still gonna help them with some of their programs and be with them through the smart days." They're part of this county too, so I wanna make sure that Guernsey's taken care of, Glendale, Chugwater, Hartville, all those areas are taken care of, and that we're providing our best that we can. Cops are funny people, because they are the first to complain that, "Hey, we need to change this, we need to change that." And then when we do change it, they have to change it, you know? And I was guilty of that myself. But, and I understand that there are concerns with the changes that may be coming up, whether it's me or somebody else, and what their concerns are, and what's gonna happen with them. I want them to know that they're gonna be secure in their positions. We're not looking to get rid of anybody. I want to make sure that they stay in their positions, but grow in those positions, that they develop and become more. And I want them to meet their goals. Their goal may be to only be here for five years and then move on to a different profession. I'm gonna help them get to those professions that they want to in that time period. So if they need to go and get an education in what they wanna do, hey, I'll help you get to your education, so just go in and do what you wanna do. But while you're here, I just expect, you know, that hundred percent commitment, taking care of what we need to take care of, and I will do everything I possibly can to make you secure and comfortable in the positions that you are in. So, I'm not looking to come in and make major changes or anything like that, where, oh my God, you know, I just do a sweeping, you know, hand wave and things change like that, that's not the way. I need to address each deputy, whether it's out on the street or in the jail, and what their needs are, and what their concerns are, and how they would like. Because it's not just me, it's not my department, it's their department too. And how they feel on what the direction that the sheriff's officers go, and how they feel that they can make it a better place, not only for the community, but for them, so. They're all secure, you know. We wanna make it better for them, and I want them to feel that.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Harrison. Good morning. Tony, how are you this morning?
Wind's blowing, sun came up, life is good.
Did Malcolm wake you up back there?
No, I was actually watching the parade, it was a good time, I mean.
You see Willie leading it?
I didn't see a whole lot, I was rocking my way, but I heard the band.
Well, Tony, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being the sheriff of Black County?
Okay. So, I've been in law enforcement since 2004. At that point in time, I, you know, that kid that grows up, brings me in firefight or cop, and decided to do the cop choice. And, worked in Nebraska for three years, and then wife and I moved to Wyoming, and we've been here since 2007. So I've pretty much worked, if there's a department to work in, I've worked in it. So, started out in jail, did that for a while, went to the road, did that until 2018 or 19, then I went to Project Safe and was a victim witness advocate for them, which, obviously, I-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was a really good career, but even though I, you know, lost a couple of years, or a year and a half on retirement, I got to see the other side of it. I got to work with the victims, I got to sit in court, which, I'm not sure even attorneys would agree, but I kinda like court, it's interesting to me. So, then I came back here. Clyde had asked if I wanted to be lieutenant, and I said, "Sure, why not?" And, I'm asked if I wanted to be in charge of dispatch, and I said, "Sure, why not?" The idea of, you know, I don't leave without, I'm not gonna let people do anything that I'm not gonna do myself. So I got my communications certification. I've done a dispatch, and I said, "Do you wanna be, work with Terry? What do you wanna do emergency management?" After I did that for a while, I said, "Sure, why not?" And then fire warden, "Sure, why not?", because that way I got to fulfill the firefighter portion of the dream, so. They didn't tell me it's gonna be, you know, all paperwork, but it is all fun, and both jobs. So, that's me in a nutshell. I have a wife, two beautiful children, who, apparently the sophomore was too cold, chickened out not to go on the float today, because I wasn't going for that.
There's some intelligence that runs in the family then. After that's said, let's get back to the interview.
Go ahead.
What's your relationship with the department now, as far as interpersonal relationships, and how you develop those, going from where you are right now to a sheriff position as a direct command over the entire department?
Yeah. So, I mean, I'll tell you, there are a lot of folks back there that I've never met, especially in detention. So it's really just kinda going back to the idea of, whatever they've done, whatever their issue is, I've been there, I've had the same issue. I may not have an answer, but we're gonna sit down until we find an answer. You know, we don't have to have problems that continue on. Come with a solution. If you don't have a solution, let's find one, as we move forward, so. Other than that, you know, I cross the street from the individuals, I stop in there every once in a while, not as much as I should, granted, but, you know, I just hope that my body of work throughout my career, you know, somewhere inside of that building, that I say, "Well, you know, remember back when crows did this?", you know, something like that. But, you lead by getting respect, and respect is earned. So, you have to do that. And apparently, some of them, you know, a lot of them are gonna have to learn what.
What's your, what would be your availability and visibility out in the community as sheriff?
I'm a people person. I mean, whether forced into it by my family or by volunteering, I mean, you work for the people. And same thing with the individuals, I mean, the work for me, I work with me, is, it's for them. So, if you have a problem, if you have a question, come to me. I will tell you that, I don't really have much of life outside of town, but every once in a while, I do leave town, you know, and that's gonna happen, but, people, if they have questions, if they have problems, the only way to fix a problem is by, you know, looking at it, not waiting on it, it just makes it worse. So my availability is pretty open. I've always had an open door.
Tony, your place or-
Sorry, no, go ahead.
If you had to come up with one thing in your mind that qualified you over the other two to be this top law officer in the county that does stand head and shoulders up, what would that be?
The fact that I've donated my holidays, my birthdays, my blood, sweat, and tears for the last seventeen years to that building over there, in this county.
So the sheriff, you're in an interesting position right now, the emergency managing coordinator plus, 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 right? So you've had some examples of where the sheriff's department, one of the main things they deal with is crisis, right? It's a crisis that just happened, or is needs response to right now, and you can't get a good, when you go, I, I've never been in the shoes, but I would imagine that when you go to a scene, in any scene, you know a little bit about it, but you are, you're adjusting what you're doing and learning about what's happening as you get there, as you deal with it, as you, whatever. So an example of that would be like the Hartville fire or something like that, that you have dealt with in the past. How do you think that went, and what's the reviews that we've gotten from all the other agencies? I think that's a good example of working with the towns and everything else. There was the federal government, there was two counties, there was all sorts of other stuff, and then a fire on top of it that was happening. How do you think that went? What was the report that you got back from all the other agencies on how that was handled?
So, you add on to that the fact that we displaced an entire town twice.
Exactly.
You know, and the fact that I'm still here, I hope that they're not that angry with me for doing that, but I, everything that you do, yeah, you talked about it, we think about, as we're responding to that, my mind is usually thinking of multiple scenarios, of what is gonna happen? Do any of them ever happen the way I think they are? No. I mean, but you're setting yourself up for the what-ifs. How you're not only gonna take it on right now, but how you're gonna fix it on afterwards. The biggest portion that we lack, you know, is feeling like you're done with the call, but not being done with the call. There are so many underlying factors, and so many underlying things that are going on afterwards that you have to address, otherwise it's just gonna be a problem again. So, how I feel it went, it was a learning experience. You know, you find out really your assets that you have when it hits the wall. And, very grateful for every single one of those individuals that showed up, so. I think it went as good as it could with the scenario we had.
Hartville's still there?
Hartville's still there, Guernsey's still there, we didn't lose any lives.
Pretty good. What would you change about that?
Sending people home too early.
Yeah, I'm not digging, I honestly, this is a great example to work from, so I'm gonna keep-
No, this is a great example, and the number of after actions that we've went through, and in my head as well, because, I mean, you're an individual, I hope every human being goes through this, you know. We make mistakes, the normally bad mistake is the one you don't learn from, so. Yeah, I would change, we relied a lot on the weather service forecast that the wind is gonna go down to 2,100 hours. And then when that didn't happen, and, you know, we thought we could get some people some rest. Understandable. But we also realized that fire is now, it is nothing that you can predict. There is no such thing as a normal fire, there's no such thing as a fire season anymore, so. Sending the folks home, I would change that. But, there's also really no way of knowing. And I mean, if you can predict the weather, you're a much better man than I am.
I can cut hay and put it on the ground and get you some rain.
You must've cut hay, you're a reason.
We did. So, so along those lines, it's, that was a grueling experience for a lot of people and it was because it was a fire. It was because some, they were up against something that doesn't stop for a coffee break or whatever, so. In most fires and situations like that, you don't have the option to go home or you have the crew that you have, and so a lot of those guys were thirty-six, forty-eight hours that were going, right? Turns out, the sheriff's department is very similar to that right now, so how do you give some relief to the officers that are in the sheriff's office? Because they have been going from daylight till dark and then plus, for I don't know how long, quite a while. So how do you, how do you resolve that issue?
Well, I mean, it's not, many things can be fixed overnight with the staffing. It's gonna take some time because my belief is surrender yourself to good people. We're not gonna hire bodies, we're gonna hire good people. But that being said, you try to fill the void as much as you can in this position. I mean, I'm still a certified law enforcement officer statewide, I'm still authorized to do whatever needs to be done. If I have to take a shift or two, get some people some rest, great, I can handle, I can work, like I said, each one of those departments back there. Dispatch needs help, I can go back help dispatch. Road needs help, I can do that. But, once again, also realizing that I know what it's like, I, I've been in those shoes of making sure that you don't hit the sixteen hour mark, so you clock off right before that and then clock back on. I'm not saying it's right. But I mean, we've all been to that point where frankly, you have to do what you have to do in order to make it through. And sometimes you question why you're doing it, but then get a couple hours of sleep, life is good after that.
You either get through it or you die.
Yeah, you'll be surprised what you live through. But yeah, and that, that just goes back to the same idea. I've been there, folks, I've done it, I've worked shorthanded, I've, I know what it's like and I know how hard it is and I'm gonna try what I can to do to make sure that they don't get to that point. And I know what most of them already are.
Tony, how would you, how would you make sure all the current deputies and staff and dispatchers and floor swimmers and everybody that's involved in that department and that building? How do you make them feel respected for what they do? And when they have a concern, are they heard? Do they feel like they're heard? How do you, how do you do that?
Same concept, you, you hear them, you listen to them, you open that door, you make them approachable. I make myself approachable. I would hope that the people that do know me, that work around me, have that respect, whatever, and that. If not, I'll do what I can to earn that, and that's by working hard, using common sense, which isn't common anymore, but we'll try to figure it out. You know, knowing that, and I hate to say this this way, and I said it the other night in the church, but knowing that I will walk through the gates of hell with them if they will do the same for me.
Tony, how do you, what are your views on some of the specialty programs like the SRO and the K-9 unit? And are there any other programs that we currently don't have that you'd be interested in looking at?
So, I'm gonna start out with the SRO position, that has been probably one of the sickest things that we've done in this county. Those kids love and respect those officers because they see them every day, they realize that they are people. That gets lost when you don't have that kind of program. I mean, you can be an authoritative figure all you want, but at a certain point in time, that, that almost just includes more defiance from them. So if they see you as an individual, as a person, they can approach and ask. I love that about that. And they can have some role models, they can have some leaders within their community. So the SRO, love that. Canines? If you have an individual who is dedicated to work in that canine and doing it properly and making proactive stops, doing what they need to do? Yeah, I, I'm fine with that, it's not gonna be everybody gets a canine. I will tell you, just from some of the people I've arrested, some of the people I've talked to, they notice this stuff down in Fort Collins, down up in Bozeman, they notice those departments are proactive, they notice those departments that have taken the extra steps. And then they try to go around those departments, so, you know, see on I-25, if there's a large number of police presence or a large number of traffic stops, they're gonna go over eighty-five and vice versa. So I mean, these things are important to have if they are done correctly. Really what I wanna see out in the, the community is just, I'm a person, I'm a people person. I wanna see the guys and girls get out there, I wanna see them talk with the individuals. Go out in the county, see a guy that's taking a break off his tractor, go talk to him, see how he's doing. Stuff like that, you know, as for programs, just the steps we've taken, you know, I'll give my predecessor credit, I mean, he, he did well, starting up some, some ideas. And, you know, I, I think the biggest thing is just getting out in public. Showing them that we're here to serve them, to not be robots, but to protect them. So, I, I didn't give you much insight on anything further, but I will tell you that I do love that SRO program.
Tony, I think I understood you're right. You need no post certifications?
No.
You're not?
I'm still certified, I'm still.
Get the ground running?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I'm about updated and due for dispatch communication research, but that's.
You know, if, if you were appointed, would you run for it in the next election cycle? Or is that too far out or have you given it any thought?
Oh, I've absolutely given it a thought. I would have to. I mean, that's, just by sticking my neck out here and doing this is a huge risk. I mean, I get this, my retirement date through post is Jan, not that I would ever notice. January seventh, two thousand twenty-nine. Coincidentally, the same as my contract ended as the fire warden, but. So I would have to do this, and frankly, if I thought that I couldn't do the job anymore, I wouldn't be with it. The idea that I sit behind a computer all the time now, which does need to be done, don't get me wrong, I fully understand the sheriff is administrative, he's there for his workers, for the people, you have to be present. But I also realize that, you know, I'm only forty-three years old and I did check with my daughter this morning, it reminds me how old I am. I have a lot left to give. So I'm not done by any means, not by far. And so, yeah, I would have to run for the next election. That's really where it pulls into, do a good enough job right now, if the people like me, if people like what I do, I won't have to worry about it. If I mess up, then I don't deserve to be here.
Because next time it'll be up to them.
Exactly. I kinda like that too, I mean, not saying you guys aren't gonna do a phenomenal job, pick my candidate, because whoever it may be is fine. But we work for the people. You guys know that as well.
That's what we do.
Exactly.
So how do you, what are some things that you would, maybe you've addressed it, what are some things that you see that would be changed? In the first, and what does your first ninety days look like? So one ties into the other.
So the first ninety days, first and foremost is finding out what, what the issues are. Getting down deep, getting down nitty gritty, talking to the people that work there. What do we need to do to change? What can we do to make this more of a positive atmosphere? I'll tell you, when I first started here as a family, you did not want to disappoint your sheriff. People would do whatever they needed to do for that sheriff. And so it's building that, and then finding people that will be welcomed into that, will buy into that, will do whatever it takes to work for Black County. Even though we don't pay Colorado wages, we don't pay Western Wyoming wages. You come here for the life, you come here for the community. Yeah, wages will be addressed. We will take care of the people who are loyal to us, who will work for us. But it's also bringing people in, and it's harder for the younger generations especially, they, they look at the price tag that we're offering them, but they don't look at the insurance, the benefits, the retirement that we also bring in. So, for those that are currently wearing brown here today, yeah, we'll try to get you guys taken care of, we'll try to get you guys up to speed where we need to be so that we can recruit some good people to come in here and at least give a second look. But we're also gonna make sure that those individuals know it's not, you can go down and work in Denver for a hundred and fifty thousand a year, great, but you're gonna get shot at. You're gonna come here, if I get in a fight in the street, I'm not saying I will. Every person in this room, whether they like me or not, is gonna come help me. Down there, you're not gonna get that. So, it's knowing quality of life.
So, how much have you reached out to the community to, to find out what the issues, they have concerns, not issues per se, concerns they have with the sheriff's office?
So that's the joy in that, wearing a uniform everyone's want. They're more approachable to you, I mean, obviously, there are issues, there are concerns, I mean, we, we have a car lot of vehicles out there that are broken. That is something people see. How we interact with the community, how we act, we're supposed to be held to a higher standard. Whether they like it or not, whether the public likes it or not, we're in the public eye, you're held to a higher standard. We've missed a little bit of that sometimes. So, we'll get back there, whether it's me or not, we will get back there, I have full faith.
So the things that I've heard from the community are like the visibility out in, in the county, right? So how do you, and there's other issues like that, but how do you go about solving that or prioritizing the list of stuff that you have to change or you have to address being the sheriff?
Yeah. First and foremost is getting help, finding those around me that can help with that. I think we got a good group of people here that are gonna work hard to do that. So, it's just, I guess, sitting down and talking to them, letting them know, this is why we do this. We all wanna go play on the interstate, I get that. You, you can't be a cop and not have that, that want and need to, you know, live the fancy life. But I, I work for the people here. Go out, enjoy the back roads, go talk to people, make them feel safe, because we all know that if you're gonna do dumb stuff, you always look around for a cop car first, right? And if they see that cop car and if they're wondering when that cop car's gonna be, or when that person, that cop is down there shaking a door, three o'clock in the morning, you're in Chugwater, that's really kinda where it goes, that's where it starts. So, yeah, go do your canine stuff, like I said, love that program as well, has a great purpose. But also be present for those towns, those, those individuals out in the county that frankly, I take pride in the fact that I think it's geography, I love geography. So, if I have a specially frustrating day, I'm gonna drive up by Sheep Mountain, I'm gonna go up to Vista Grande and, you know, see if I can talk to somebody. Get out, we have beautiful landscape here, go see it, there's great people here, go talk to them. Amazing what you learn.
Tony, how do you handle mistakes that you personally make and then also mistakes that are made by folks that you supervise?
It goes back to, okay, there are bad mistakes, there are mistakes that get people hurt. But my idea is, you take the mistakes that you make and you learn from them. I mean, I now prioritize things a lot better, thank you, Ian. But really, I mean, you, you need those things every once in a while to remind yourself that you're human. And as long as they're not mistakes that don't, you know, result in somebody getting hurt, you know, any other massive, you know, faux pas. You learn from them, you move forward, you take that knowledge. That'll tell you, these guys out in the hallway, there is a lot of knowledge from them. These guys sitting here, there's a lot of knowledge there. And every single one of us has made mistakes. And, you know, mistakes, if, if they make mistake, depending on how large that mistake is, there might be some definite talks, meetings, further on, but just help and teach them that that's mistakes you make in life and you move forward, you learn from them, push forward and you be better, just be better.
One thing I hate about, one of the responsibilities I do not like, but is basically the foundation of any organization with people under you is, how do you deal with interpersonal issues?
If that was easily found out, we wouldn't have these issues today.
I agree, that's why I'm asking.
If I had the magic, information magic stick to tell you exactly how to stop it right now, I'd do it, I would've done it twenty years ago. It's, I just think, bring back that, that idea that you do not want to hurt, irritate, frustrate those that are fighting next to you. Because it is a brotherhood back there, it's a sisterhood, it's a family. You know, we talk about it a lot of, you may not always get along with your family, but nobody messes with your family. So, bringing that together again, realizing that, you know what, I may not get along with, you know, Subject Day, but Subject Day knows I have his back or her back at any point in time, it's building that. And I'm not asking you to go to work barbecue afterwards, I'm asking you to be cordial, be happy, be kind to each other. Also have each other's back, let them know that I go to work, I'm going home afterwards. It's just building that cohesive nature that I'm hoping will kinda bring people together. You see a lot of us that have went through a major call or a bad call together, that group will probably be the ones to stick together the most. I'm not saying I want bad things to happen for those guys and girls back there to, you know, stick together, it's just realizing that that's your family, you take care of your family. So if I had an answer for you, Ian, it would've been taken care of longer before that, but until I get boots on the ground back in that place, it's tough, it's tough, and especially where we have such turnaround. How are you a family if you don't get to know each other?
Do you have another question, do you? Tony, I just have one other question. I've been a commissioner for quite some time. Can I hold the record? I've never been named in a lawsuit until I was a commissioner.
Yeah.
And the majority of those lawsuits are from across the valley here, or wrongful termination type lawsuits. What would you do to limit the liability of the county in terms of these lawsuits?
In terms of lawsuits, I mean, obviously, and I, I think that kind of went through this now, getting better with it, but I mean, if you have an issue that needs to be addressed and an issue that frankly deserves termination, I've been there, I've, I've had to terminate before, it's a really, really hard thing to do. But don't wait on that. I think a lot of our problem is, we build these cases on this stuff and then we kinda get lax on it and then, and this is just outside looking in, obviously. Then we kinda get to the point where, well, this has gotta go, but now we don't have what we had. It's, I'm going around in circles on it just because, like I said, I'm on the outside looking in, I don't know how all these went. But you gotta learn from your mistakes, you're doomed to repeat them, and then when you repeat them, then you need to not be there. Speak with legal counsel, speak with those around me that have been there. That's a really good question, Steve. You know, just try to make sure that your assets are covered and then that's speaking with legal counsel, building a case. I mean, everything you do in this, you build a case. If you're investigating something, you're building that case. Termination's inevitable. You hate to think about it, you hate to do it. Frankly, if everybody could do this job though, we'd have a lot more applicants and we'd be full staff. So. once again, if I had an answer for that, I'd be already sitting in that spot. I'd probably be way past that in the government. I'm a big proponent of just building the case, holding on to the information from your attorneys that are gonna be fighting for you. And frankly, most of the time when people do something, I mean, once again, common sense, gets to that point where you have to be terminated, you know in your heart that you probably, and that's why they fight, and that's why we fight, and gosh, I really don't have an answer, I I'm really going through my head right now.
Do you have any more questions, Ian?
Yeah, I've asked this to other candidates, but this is not... There's a lot of things in life, I think you get to a certain age, you realize that this is what you do, and it's not just what you do, it's what you are, right? And so being a sheriff is what you are. You're responsible to everybody in Black County, no one outside of Black County, right? This this is your family, right? So when there's eight thousand people with a crisis at some point, and they, when their heart attack wakes for eight o'clock in the morning, when the hospital opens up and the ER kinda shuts down, doesn't happen. And so my my point that I'm making is that this is a, not a full-time job, it's something that you are. And so do you have any reservations about being called out at two o'clock in the morning for two weeks straight?
For the last two years plus, I've been a department of one. That phone stays with me all points in time. I'm not opposed to that, I'm not scared of that, I don't love it. But when I went through the academy, I was told that look to your left, look to your right, most of these people won't make it past two years. Twenty-one and a half years into this career, I'm still here, it is already my life. Even when I'm not wearing a uniform, I'm still a public servant. So it's not something you turn off, it's not something that goes away.
Do you think you can manage that relationship with your family?
My family's already lived it for the last, you know, been married, I'm not gonna tell you how many years, because I'd have to look at the calendar. But I have support, I have support from my family, I have support from people in this room that frankly took time off work so they come here. That's pretty huge, right? That's a lot to put on a shoulder, I don't wanna let people down. But I have people in the department who are counting on me. I'm I'm done for doing this, let's face it. I have a secure job over there, I have a job where I stay out of the wind most of the time, I have a job where, you know, I I deal with firefighters, I deal with public servants. That altogether, I think, helps me with my interpersonal skills of finding out different personalities to talk to, how to reach those people. It's been great, it's been wonderful, and actually, I kinda hope to speak to the guys about how we're gonna move forward, if this does move forward, and if it doesn't, great, I still have an awesome job. I have a job that most people in this county would love to have. And yet I'm still here. Because I'm serving, is what I'm doing, I'm serving where I feel like I can best serve. I know law enforcement, I know people. I know you treat people like you wanna be treated, and that's how you do the best. I know that every time somebody calls in and nine one one or stops in that office, it's the worst time of their life. So.
You know, Tony, I think it takes somebody that's got a dedication, that, you know, the dedication to work for the kind of funds that we can barely afford to pay. And they stop somebody one o'clock in the morning, on the highway, by themselves, they know backup is how far away, and they're it. You know, so when they're doing that, that's that's gotta be tough. I I couldn't do it, you know, not, I I can't imagine having to to do that, you know, pull up, because you don't know what you're gonna get. I don't have to tell these guys that. So the bravery that they have to have, you know, to to do that, and yet not let it twist their melon up to the point of where they can't operate for, you know, a half a day or another day, that says something about a group of individuals who is willing to do that every single day. And you put themselves out there. And granted, like you say, Colorado, they get shot at, well, they could get shot at here too.
Everything happens.
I mean, there's there's no boundaries for for that anymore. I mean, this highway that goes by here, when I was very young, and that was a long time ago, that interstate wasn't there yet. And everything come through town. But when that happened, that the amount of traffic that comes through here, I can't even imagine what's out there. You guys would have way more information on that than than we would ever do. And there's probably a good reason the general public doesn't know. Might scare the shit out of them, just saying, you know, truth.
And frankly, if they knew everything that you go upon, I mean, look at these two guys here, do they look like they're comfortable? They wear that every day because, well, frankly, you wear the vest because of that. And in Black County, we've had officer-involved shootings, we've had murders. We were the murder capital of America for a while, a couple of years ago. I mean, beating Chicago and Detroit is not always good.
That's a per capita thing.
Per capita, yes. But, yeah, you gotta be prepared for everything that happens. You gotta train for that. You gotta lose complacency, because let's face it, complacency kills. You just also have to be a lot more complacent when you're wearing that badge, wearing that uniform, because you're a target. So.
Where I live, I've got a silhouette sign on the end of my house with a gun that just says, we don't call nine one one. Some previous sheriffs had said, well, where you live, it'll probably be over by the time we can get here.
That's why you call eight one one.
So, Tony, because this is a public, elected job, I'm gonna open it up to the public here for questions. Is anybody in the switch around, I can actually ask you, public have questions, Josh?
I'll just continue. Joshua Hopkins, Mayor of Chugwater.
Yes, sir.
The town of Chugwater is willing now to establish a relationship with the sheriff's office that maybe it hasn't had, but did start to have under Sheriff Russell, where I think I had a pretty good personal relationship with him and we saw the deputies quite a bit more. And if we know we can't take up all the time and funds and everything, I'm gonna be as selfish as I can for the community. Especially knowing that when you're in our community, there's people down Iron Mountain Road, Diamond Road, out on the flats that are also getting that visibility and coverage when you leave town and go out a different way. So what would your, what would your plan be? I don't need a whole master plan now, and I I know exactly what you mean, but kinda work things out as you come into them. But just to continue that relationship, what do you have in mind?
So we still have the offices down there? The office?
That office is open and empty.
I'm waiting for you.
Keep in mind, I got a lot of guys who've been working a lot of hours, a lot of time. But also keep in mind that I need to get down there in the community as well. I need to be able to be available for whatever those folks need. So, yeah, we're gonna make sure that every municipality in in town, you know, in this county gets what they need, gets the coverage they need, gets the feeling that they can go to bed at night and not have to worry about something, get that what they need. So, you know, I'm assuming, you know, first time in politics kinda deal?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know where I'm gonna be, I'm trying to figure out how to do, and that frankly, even as emergency manager, I need to get down there and sit with you, I need to get down and talk with you. So no matter what nasty, we need to build that relationship because you are, you're kinda the town to go through to get to wherever you need to go, and there's a lot of interesting individuals out there that are gonna be stopping and seeing your lovely little town. So.
Well, I appreciate that, and we can maybe donate a little coffee maker or something to that office.
You you had.
I have one, I know, I'm ready.
They, we need a special deputy. Might be a special blender.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you.
So I'm piggybacking off of Josh, my office, well, I live on the flats in Chugwater, but my office is in Chugwater, so, um, and we would share our office. So I'm wondering what your plans are moving forward to get someone staffed in that office with that, like, maybe a timeframe or something like that? And then the second part to that is, I live up on the flats, and lately, and Josh could attest, there's been some not-so-great things going on. So I'm wondering how you would address the increase in property damages and stuff like that?
So A, it comes down to visibility. Like we talked earlier, it's, you know, if you see a cop car, if you see a law enforcement officer, you see something that makes you have to feel, you know, regretful of what you do, then you're gonna be thinking twice about what you're doing. Chugwater's about to get a whole lot busier, whether it's if the wind farm goes through or whatever else is coming in. Cheyenne is moving north, Chugwater is going to find itself. It's gonna start growing. Because those people, like I said, even if wind farm doesn't go through, nothing of that is is a done deal. It's it's inevitable. You're gonna find people, as soon as Cheyenne gets big enough, that wanna get out of Cheyenne, and Chugwater is your bedroom community, so it's gonna grow. We gotta take that on as as we do and hopefully hit it head-on before we have a problem. And Glendo, I mean, you look at Glendo the same way. Glendo is a growing community. It's a growing community of people who, let's face it, aren't from around here, have, you know, yeah, that that's gonna be a, it's gonna be a learning curve for some of them, with the difference, let's face it, between state lines. But most of those people moving up here are because they don't wanna be down south. They wanna come up here because Wyoming's way of life is awesome. That's why we're still here. So I obviously understand that I can't do it all myself. That's why I have the groups that I have, and I hope that I can prove myself to them.
So I I guess would staffing with substations be a top priority or would that be a long-term kind of thing?
Top priority right now is making sure, because I think I have like five deputies for a county this size. So actually getting a staff individual in there at all times, I'm not gonna share code things, folks, I am brutally honest. Staffing a person full-time there, getting somebody there most time is gonna be tough, until I get people. So, I mean, if you guys know anybody who wants a job, who can be a valuable, productive member, please send them my way, or please send them these guys my way.
Mrs. Fletcher, do you have a question?
I got you. I'm the coach down at Prairie View School. And this kinda relates to all of the changes the county is facing right now. We bus children in from Cheyenne. These are people, I I graduated from Chugwater High School, and we knew everyone in the county, we knew everyone in our school, and if there was a child with a problem, we knew who to, who to talk to. Now we don't have that, you might have a child that you don't even know if they're a single parent or any parent, or, you know, are they on the street? And so this is addressing the SRO. You know, if the Chugwater is in need of that kind of a program, because we have children coming in that have, their only experience with law enforcement has been that.
And that's.
That's just an issue for us.
That's where I praise that program. I mean, they've done an amazing job opening it up to the kids, so where they don't feel safe, where they see that person, it's, well, they're just gonna arrest my mom or dad. You know, this is now a position where I feel like I'm threatened, I feel like I have a problem, I feel like I just need to talk to somebody. You have an SRO, or, you know, and I I do a lot of stuff in the schools with, you know, the career days, and frankly, I, that's what I do, I love that stuff. Stranger danger, which turned into tornado safety, which made the people take pieces of paper and throw them around and simulate a tornado, and they did it, so it was amazing. But it's getting that stuff, getting in with the kids, making them feel comfortable. Yes, there are consequences, no matter what we do in life, either good or bad. And I think building that early on of your bad consequences are gonna have, you know, problems, are gonna have issues. But it's also realizing that people screw up, people make mistakes. They'll pay for their mistake, but move forward. And we're not out to arrest mom and dad, we're out to teach them, we're out to learn, and we're out to make sure, whatever it is for that kid, is gonna be best to build them into a productive member of society. So that I don't have to work the rest of my life, you know, somebody else can jump in.
Mr. Britt?
Tony, a little different question here. If you were selected to be our new sheriff, what's the procedure for replacing, for your replacement in the job that you currently hold?
That's where it gets difficult. I'm in the middle of a couple of major grants.
Could you make a clean step?
It's, it's gonna be a step. It's, frankly, it's one of those things, it's gonna happen one way or the other.
The what, the guy behind you does a little bit more than just the county commissioner right now.
Oh, yeah.
And so, so what's the procedure for that, I mean, hiring?
So.
Yeah, that's a problem you can't solve right now, I mean.
So, okay, so what's the procedure?
What's the procedure? It would look like, it would look like opening it up. We have some good people in Black County that are, there was some competition for his job when he got it, right? And so I don't think that there's, to me, there's not a biggest step, that's pretty easy, right? We can offload his responsibilities to someone else, that's just a problem that we'll address, but there's some very clear cut, here's, here's who may be interested, we'll go solicit and do that, but I don't think that there's anything that's gonna be dropped, as far as dropping the ball on on this net. We do have some redundancy in that, and we have, as far as a fire warden goes, that's what I think about. Fire warden is a very important position for us, especially during January to December. And so that position has two deputy fire wardens that can support him. We can look for a new fire warden, but we don't have any loss of service in that position exclusively. The emergency management thing, you know, I have my opinions on that, but that one can be filled also without missing a beat. And I'm pretty confident that we can replace those responsibilities as they come along. And if they don't come along for a month or two, I don't think we have any, anything that will be missed or that we will have any liability from something that happens during that time, right?
So you have some some things to tie up, some grants to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's expected.
The joy of all of these jobs together. The sheriff is responsible for everything that happens in the county. Frankly, if if I'm still fire warden after this, I'm gonna be at a fire, I'm gonna go do what I normally do, I'm just gonna be in a different car, wearing a different hat, but I'm still gonna end up doing everything that I did. The emergency management side, that's same deal. I mean, I go to all emergencies. The sheriff goes to all the emergencies, that's where I mostly saw the sheriff's office and law enforcement was, whatever was happening. The only difference is, is the paperwork that's done afterwards. So you're not gonna lose any services. And frankly, I am loyal to a complete horrible fault on everything, so, you know, she can nod her head. So you're not gonna lose anything when I, if, I'm not gonna put my cart before my horse. But if if it is me, then you're not gonna lose anything, we're not even gonna lose a step. I will unfortunately probably work myself more than need to be and frustration to her, but I got a strong foundation. I know where it's gonna go.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
How are you going to address the stigma? Because through the, through the entire interview process, you never talked about department policy.
Yeah.
So how do you adjust and fix the statement that the sheriff's department doesn't apply policy to everybody equally? Being you have previous, some of these guys are your friends, now you have to be their boss.
Yeah, so it's always been, this is horrible to say, with my kids, I'm dad. I can be friends, I can be fun, but you mess up, you get dad. And I would hope that they have enough respect for me to know that I'm in this job, I'm putting myself on the line here for all of this to make sure that they have a better life. And I would hope to make sure that they would take care of me as I would take care of them, but also realize that you screw up, you're gonna face consequences. I would hope the same for myself. We're human. We abide by the same rules, we are nobody above the law, and you mess up, you're you're gonna deal with it. So I I tend to be pretty straightforward on. So I tend to be pretty straightforward on stuff like that. And I would hope that they respect me enough that they wanna put me in that position. But if they do, we move forward. I'm not here to make the friends. I'm here to essentially take care of them while they're there and take care of my people and take care of my family. Because family's number one. I will never put anything over family, but... There's accountability, accountability will happen.
Any other questions?
I've asked it of everybody, Tony, but a little different since you're within the county. I guess the honest truth of what you would see as wasteful spending in the sheriff's office and county in general, looking at a reduced budget mixture as well. So input as to where your mind is, right off the bat, of what could be trimmed?
Right off the bat? That's pretty tough. I'd have to actually look at their budget.
For what it's worth, we took my actual question for you, so... I had to back up my previous question.
No worries. So straightforward, honest question. I am a sanitor. I would have to look at what they're spending money on. I pretty much been in my little corner, took care of my budgets, took care of my spending. I try not to spend, I'm a penny pincher. So we'll see how that goes with a bigger budget and all that. It's probably gonna be very daunting. I would hope that the guys would tell me what they need, what they don't need, what we can go through. I'm not gonna do this alone. My biggest thing and my biggest problem with this is going to be, I've worked by myself. I've been my guy. I've relied upon me for so long. I need to rely upon others. That's gonna be the biggest portion of me being able to do this. So Malcolm, welcome to the club. But hopefully rely on those people that are wearing the uniform too. They've been right there. I've been in a building across the street, my own happy little windowless world. Gotta talk to them. Thank you. So I'm sorry, it's not like I'm dodging questions here, folks. I'm just not gonna lie to you. Probably unfortunately bluntly honest. So here we go. Any other questions? Well, go ahead, man. Feel free.
I, my question's actually not for you, sorry. But thank you for offering. Thank you very much for putting yourself out there. I have a question for the commissioners.
Sure.
Do you have your finger on the pulse and know, and we have all these officers, sheriffs and officers present. Have you polled them or after listening to all this, would you poll them privately? Just to know what they are looking at after listening to all? This has been awesome.
So I've reached out to the sheriff's department and Will Kirkland and... And, you know, asked them if they had any questions they would like us to ask, if they had any input. And we did get a lot of input ahead of time from them. That was really good input. And so, yeah, they've been involved in our decision-making process, so...
So I guess what I mean is, after listening to all three of these candidates, because they've all done a fabulous job, if you were to secretly poll them now, would you consider what their request would be? Because, I mean, they're interviewing their boss.
Yes.
I'm just curious.
And actually, just sitting here, I'm thinking, I would like to poll the whole room. Because the sheriff is gonna work for every one of us. And see if we're seeing what you're seeing. And I don't have a problem with that. If you guys would like to do that, if you would rather the candidate be out of the room when you did that.
Yeah.
I'm against that, but...
I applaud that.
So Tony, unless there's any other...
If there's any other questions?
Well, not, sorry, not questions.
I will say, I got to spend two hours in a room without a cell phone. Life was good for a minute.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
So is it fair to ask the sheriff's department their opinion? The employees, I mean, based on the situation the current department is in? Is that only the fault of one person that we're replacing? Or is it a collective administrative staff issue? And if you're gonna go off their opinions, if it's collective administration, can we trust their opinions? Or if it was based on just one person?
So the bottom line is, is we make the decision.
Oh, yes, I, I, I 100%. Yes, yes.
We can ask for their opinion, we can ask for your opinion. But ultimately, we are gonna make the decision.
So I guess my ultimate question is, is there gonna be change?
In the sheriff's department? And that was...
Because that's gonna depend on the OK.
That was what we were interviewing the candidates for. What's gonna happen, what kind of change, what we expect.
At the end of the day, the sheriff is an elected position, the head of his department, that only, the only finger we have on him is the budget. This is commissioners.
He is the ultimate authority in the county.
That's right, so asking...
He answers to no one.
Which side, you know, which way is a duck gonna fly come September 1st? Probably south. But do you have any control over the... Exactly, so there's a lot of faith and trust that goes into this. And that's what we're talking about with character and integrity and all this sort of, other sort of stuff. Right, so unless we have been bamboozled, then that's the case. But we will have to deal with it either way.
At least three of us in this room were the people that voted to put these three names forward. And the way the system is set up is that we have to trust. People that put me as a committee woman for the Republican Party for precinct four, trust who need to make a decision. Roy, Jacinda, and so the four of us. We now need to sit back and trust you guys to do what you're there for.
And I think this position will be accountable in its 14 months. That's what the position is for. One of the things I've struggled with is when we hire somebody, whether it's a new emergency management coordinator or we make appointments to the various boards, we have the ability, if something doesn't work out, to replace that person. The thing that I struggle with today is that I'm gonna make this appointment and I have no authority to change it if things don't go wrong in six weeks, two months, whatever. That'll be up to the voters of the county. So, you know, we hire people all the time on that. You're on a 90-day trial basis. If things goes well, we can move forward. If not, you know, it might not. But this isn't the case with this position. It's, you know, it's what it is, so...
We take this really, really, really seriously. Because, you know, we had to go through, and I told Taft this when I seen him a week ago, to appoint a senator for this district to fill out this term. And I said, "Taft, don't take this wrong, but what we fixing, what we're fixing to have to do in a couple of weeks is a little more important than what we did, you know, in your process." Because you're one of many. And he said, "I get it." You know, he, you know, he says, "I understand that." Because I don't know... I don't know if you can really put a scale on this. Because to us, it's that kind of damned important. I mean, it just is. We've got, all of us, I know, have received a lot of information from a lot of different people leading up to this process that started on Monday evening. So, you know, we've had to read, we've had to do some investigating, we've had to do what we felt our due diligence was to go through and look at every conceivable angle that we can look at in doing the best job for everybody in this room, whether they wear a badge or they don't. And everybody that lives in this county. Because this person's responsible. And we don't take this lightly. This is heavy, that we have to do the right thing for the people that live here. It may be an interim thing. That doesn't matter. The word interim, throw that out. It doesn't matter. This person is the top officer for 14 months anyway. And that's just how we look at it.
Did you have a comment?
No, Steve, you answered it, thank you.
Does anybody else have any input that they wanna bring forward?
I could have, and this is maybe redundant for most people, but I guess I feel compelled to say, you know, obviously, we all have been either conducting interviews, being a part of an interview. And we all, you know, bring back our representatives to interviews. We will say what we need to say, we will do, you know, we're gonna answer the questions as we see fit. I think, I urge you guys just to really look back. You know, Albert Einstein, the best definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. And so I think in that, we need to really think outside of the box, as they've all touched on. And really just, you know, the best way you can know or predict, hope to predict what's gonna happen in the future is looking back at somebody's past. You know, they are the person they're gonna be. And I think we don't know everything about every one of them. I know there's a lot I don't know. But then there's some that I know just enough about. And if that, any of that were to repeat itself, I would be conflicted, I would be concerned. So again, yes, it is a leap of faith. It's a trust matter that we all have to go into with this. And you guys have the burden, you guys hold that on your shoulders, definitely. But I think there is evidence to each of these characters, some more than others, that could potentially help us, enlighten us and predict what the future might look like with them. And if you guys, you know, just take that into consideration, that would be my, my probably redundant statement, but statement's just the same.
Thank you.
I have to leave, unfortunately. I made the right choice.
Would you guys like, would you buy a show of hands?
Sure. I would just know which candidate you support.
I would remind everybody, it's on YouTube, obviously. And I think with all due respect, I think county employees should not participate. I think it puts them in an awkward position. I'm standing for everybody else, what may seem obvious. Not participating in the vote is not necessarily denying the chairman's request, but there's other factors.
I think ultimately, we're gonna make the decision. And it's our decision to make. So not knowing how many people are in the room that are employed by the county, maybe we'll abstain from doing that right now. Yeah, it's your decision.
It's the 16, 4, 405. I'll see.
Okay. This time, I'd like to call for us to go into the executive for personnel issues as far as statute 16, 4, 405.
Second.
Case been moved at second, and to move into executive session for personnel issues. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Case been moved at second, and to move into executive session. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna go relieve my holes. I'm like, excuse me.
Been a long time.
They left me.
Oh, you're the king of the universe.
No, I'm not. They just left me.
Yes. Yeah, that's always a plus for the people.
You don't sing chairs?
I don't care.
You don't? It was interesting to see you at the school yesterday. I did not have a connection when Harley was true.
I could see it.
It's gonna happen there.
See, well, if you'd have told me ten years ago that he was gonna be doing that, I'd have said, well, I'm concerned about his career. I don't know about that. But if he was military, I knew some other things.
We know.
Yeah, I knew that. He always had a good record.
She went back to the military.
Yeah. They gave me a start and then we need to. It must be a good addition.
Likes. Was her name, my granddaughter's. When the later one is reading. She taught in those. They come over and help. Everybody here just hold right here. He wasn't there.
You'll call our meeting back to order? Thank you. So as Commissioner Baker said, we don't take this decision lightly. We believe that whoever we select is gonna be working for the public. You're gonna be their boss. As we will be as a member of the public. We aren't as commissioners. So all the candidates, I wanna thank them for putting their name in the hat. It's sometimes hard for you to step out there in front of a lot of people and do this kinda thing. They're all good candidates. They all have good qualities. With that being said, I would consider a motion for the appointment for sheriff.
I would move to appoint Anthony Croats as to fill a vacancy in the Flat County Sheriff's.
Okay, it's been moved in second to appoint Anthony Croats to fill the vacancy of Flat County Sheriff. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
There you go.
We have a oath of office for him to take.
I prepared one for every candidate.
It's not too late to say just kidding. Tony, repeat after me.
Raise your right hand.
Then raise your right hand. I, Anthony O. Croats, do solemnly swear.
I, Anthony O. Croats, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I will support and defend the State Constitution of the United States and the State of Wyoming.
That I have knowing, that I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election.
Or appointment.
Or appointment.
Has caused it to be done by others and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Yeah. Or caused it to be done by others, or that I will, or that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
High County Commissioner Steve Shockley administer the foregoing oath authorized pursuant to Wyoming State Statute 102A12 to the elected official named herein on this seventeenth day of October, 2025. Congratulations. If I could get you to sign this. I've already done that a couple times.
All right, you are on the job.
Starts to be.
Absolutely. I just signed that paper, so technically it starts right now. Chuck, why don't you call it?
We have coffee. We have coffee.
See, perfect. That's all you have to do is offer me coffee.
We have pumpkin spice, too.
And I am one of those, you know, people that likes donuts, too. It's okay.
I do have to know that, so but if you try, you'd have to find them in my.
All right, well, thank you, folks. I appreciate it very much. Unfortunately, fully aware what I'm getting into, and that hopefully says something that I'm willing to fight for Flat County. So let's get it done, and we appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Not too much. You got some work cut out for you? That's right. He might be.
Blowing bows down maybe smaller bits.
You know, he gave it to, he, it was his uncle who was an old language chef, so he gave it to him in small bits. I get my idea to do is hearing. I get that in my ceremony. Yes.
Do you have any further business other than we would like to have emergency management coordinator on the agenda for next Tuesday?
He might be fired next Tuesday.
That's...
Just preparing your family.
Celebrating with... Gotcha. Alright, we...